Testing, there we go. Okay. Good morning, everybody. Thank you. Welcome to this morning's August 18th meeting of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors. We're going to start the meeting with prayer from Pastor Bill Franzen. If you'd like to participate in that, if you'd remain standing, Supervisor Barelli will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, and welcome guests. Heavenly Father, we come before you right now, Lord, as the county comes together to do the business. Lord, we just pray that it'll be a peaceful meeting, that the business will be taken care of. Ask for special blessing upon each and every person in this room, Lord, that you'll just guide them and that they'll be able to get their thoughts and stuff over, but yet it'll be a peaceful way. We just thank you, Father, for this council, and we just thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please face the flag of a country that has brought more prosperity to the world than mankind has ever known.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A 34 and 7. Looking for a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held on September 2nd, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel.
So moved.
Second.
Home in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As appear to have it, do have its order. Thank you. Official business to come before the board. Discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Attorney Davis?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Committee and/or legislative reports. We'll start with Supervisor Martin this morning.
Yes, I attended several economic development meetings with our Economic Development Director out in Dolan Springs. Met with some people out there that are very interested in getting that community going as far as economic development is. So really looking forward to working more with Tammy. She's done a great job out there so far, so we'll keep going.
Thank you. Supervisor Barelli?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Supervisor Letman and Attorney Davis and I, we met with the Senate President on Friday, along with the Auditor General to discuss the Mojave County Airport Authority. It was a very good meeting, very fruitful, and we'll see what happens moving forward.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould?
Nothing today, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Levitt?
I have nothing today.
All right. Well, I'll just briefly report that the Colorado River Post 2026 process is starting to get underway. ADA, or not ADA, excuse me, Arizona Department of Water Resources is coming up into our area to hold what they're calling a listening session to all of our on-river communities in the county. That'll be happening, I think, Thursday of this week. It's going to be an interesting next 12 months because we have deadlines coming up. I think President Trump has asked the seven basin states to come up with some sort of a framework by November. This time, you have not only the seven basin states in Mexico, but also I think it's around 31 tribal nations or something like that that are part of the process. And right now, they're dividing a river that they, in the agreements, 15 million acre foot a year, so seven and a half million acre feet stays in the upper basin. Seven and a half million acre feet comes down to California, Arizona, Nevada. They're modeling 12, 11, maybe even 10 million acre feet for the next round of agreements. So it's going to be a smaller river that's apportioned to everybody. Arizona is kind of the low man on the totem pole, so we're going to take a hit. So we're just really going to be advocating really, really very hard for our on-river communities, our cities. Mojave County has a law firm to help us go through all the environmental impact statements and submit comments. It's Clark Hill, John LaMaster with Clark Hill, who helped us win the legal challenge that we filed against the Greenstone transfer to Queen Creek. So we're going to keep you involved in that process, but it's going to be a really important next 12 months to try to protect the water of our on-river communities. Very important. It's their forever water, and just like those of us in Kingman that have a groundwater basin, that's our forever water. It's the river communities, their economic development, their livelihood. It all depends on having water, so we'll keep you posted. County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Chairman Lincoln Filter. Nothing to report this morning.
Thank you, sir. So before we get into the presentations, we've been told that the MCAA is having a meeting this morning that we are going to send our Economic Development Director to, so we have one item that we're going to bump up so she can get on the road. If she's, it's item 52, so if you do want to turn to item number 52. Discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of BOS Resolution 2025-143, approving Mojave County to become a destination marketing organization for the unincorporated parts of Mojave County and authorizing the county manager, Economic Development Director, Clerk of the Board, County Attorney, and/or their duly authorized officers and agents to take steps necessary to carry out the purposes and intent of this resolution. Director Ursonbach, you...
Tell us what's going on. Thank you, Chairman Lincoln Filter. Supervisors, this is a chance for our county. It's a new program. It's only three years old. And there are certain steps we had to take to be able to even qualify to become a destination marketing organization. One of those was we had to have a larger budget than $1,000 a year, which we now have a little bit more, and you have to have at least $10,000. And so we now qualify. We had to have a webpage. We have to have a social media presence, which we have had in the past, and we're building that up again. There are certain steps we had to take, but in becoming a destination marketing organization, it gives us the chance to not only apply for tourism grants, but also for the state to start using, marketing our community and our county. So it won't just be for us going out and trying to bring people in for tourism, but it will also be, they will be marketing our county as well and not just the cities. So each of the incorporated cities, except Colorado City, have a DMO. Colorado City has appointed someone or agreed to work with someone, but they have not submitted their paperwork to the state.
Questions for Director Ursonbach? Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Ursonbach, why so many people with authority?
I'm not understanding the question. I'm sorry.
You're granting authority to the county manager, the Economic Development Director, the clerk, the attorney?
That was set up by our county attorney, one of our county attorneys, and I think that was just basically to say if we ever have to sign the letter or something or the application, that we have the right to be able to do that.
Interesting. Generally, the chairman signs for the board in between meetings.
It came from the attorney, not from me.
Attorney Davis, you have any comments on that?
I'm pulling it up.
Is there any hierarchy in?
So for certain contracts and agreements, the board can authorize a authorized signer to sign on behalf of the board. For example, other contracts that the county has gone through that come to the board have an authorized signer who isn't the chairman of the board. It is proper to have the chairman do it, but it's also proper for the board to say, in such instances, these people may also sign. So as long as the authority is granted, it is okay.
When I read it, it looked to me like the resolution would be signed by the chairman, but instead of bringing the actual application, which is digital, that I would be able to do it, but that was my only interpretation. I don't know if that's true.
I just hate to see the board removed from these decisions, and essentially you're setting it on autopilot. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Levitt?
Yeah, I'd move for approval of Resolution 2025-143.
We do have a motion and second additional discussion. I don't have a real problem with the delegation authority, but how, I mean, typically when you have a grant or something, it does come before the Board of Supervisors for their say-so. By delegating is that, are we removing the board from that decision-making process?
I would always bring that back to the board.
And then my only second question would be, you mentioned that all the big three incorporated communities, I mean, there are four incorporated communities, but one of them up north, Colorado City, does not have this designation.
They've appointed the chair, the chamber, but they have not gone through the process to be designated.
My question is, how are we going to assure that we don't step on toes? I mean, if they already have an organization in Kingman and Havasu and Bullhead, and they're doing their thing, how are we going to make sure that we don't step on their toes?
I always work with the cities specifically, and I don't go into the cities unless we work together, but I go always directly to the cities. I wouldn't, I would never do anything to overstep them.
We're not, and we're not going to compete with our cities for grant opportunities or things like this.
No, no, they're separate.
All right, thank you. Well, we have a motion and second additional discussion. Hearing none in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. As appear to have it, do have its ordered. Thank you. Safe travels. We have a number of presentations this morning. Our first presentation is regarding the activities of the County Supervisors Association, including a discussion of the recent legislative session by Mr. Craig Sullivan, Executive Director, County Supervisors Association. Craig, it's always great to see you. Welcome to you and your staff.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be with you, and I'll just pull this up very quickly, and then we can begin. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members, for the opportunity to stand before you today. For the record, I'm Craig Sullivan with County Supervisors Association, and I have with me two of my team members, Caitlin King and Brandon Nie, and we're really thrilled to be here to participate in this meeting today. Our purpose is to report out to you on the association, and I provided some materials for you to that end. You have the slide deck that's a little bit more detailed than I'll go through here today, but I want you to have that content. And I also provided to you a portfolio of policy work, visualizations, things like that, to just give you a sense of some of the materials that we've put together to use in our education efforts with stakeholders that impact the counties. And just to begin with, though, I want to thank this board for its involvement in our association from the elected official level as well as the professional staff level. I know on behalf of your colleagues and us on your team, we really appreciate your collaboration with the other counties. Thank you for that. It's really a pleasure to serve you, and we look forward to doing so going into the future. This slide deck that I have for you has a lot of content in it, but as I mentioned, I'll go fairly quickly through some key items. But I did want to begin, for folks who are not familiar with who we are, with just a quick description. The County Supervisors Association is a collaboration of the 15 counties. Our Board of Directors are the supervisors in the state. We're nonpartisan. We do policy work, research work to support the state-county partnership. Counties are in the Constitution to provide state services at the local level. We serve as an efficient conduit in that conversation, supporting the counties and lawmakers on issues that come before them. In terms of the specific activities that we're involved in, I'm going to walk through what we call capacity development and info sharing, a little bit about our analytics department that I want to highlight for you, and then talk about the legislature and the intergovernmental work that we did at the Capitol this year. This slide just shows you a little bit about how we use our forum for education purposes, bringing in policymakers, professional experts, to dialogue with counties about issues that are of mutual importance. One of the things that I'm very proud of is the connection we create at the professional staff level, finance directors, managers, and others to make sure there's good information sharing across all of the counties. A few weeks ago, we were reporting out to the finance officers, and then we were briefing the managers, and next week I'm going to be meeting with the civil desk. So it's just how we make sure that there's strong conversation among counties at the professional staff level. And on the left, we put some select task forces and work groups that we're involved in. We often get tasked to work on your behalf on various policy work groups. One of the most significant investments we're making is related to the state pension systems. You all know the consequences of the underfunded nature of those systems and the massive amount of public money that everybody's had to put in to stabilize them. We've spent a lot of energy making sure that we're monitoring new policies to make sure we're not making the same mistakes that we've made in the past, and we're trying to inform the decisions that these systems make as well. And Mr. Nie spends a lot of time working with me in that capacity. When we talk about our analytics function, Mr. Chairman, members, this is where we build a database that can then be used to support discussions. So when I talk about a database, what am I talking about? We are importing as much publicly available data that we can over time from Department of Revenue, the long-term care system, the pension systems, county budgets, the court system. And we're trying to bring that in so that we then can bring it forward in terms of analysis. Right now, we're getting to about 8 million data points in that data set, and we'll continue to build that out going forward. When you look through that portfolio and when you see a lot of work that we produce, it's this underlying research function that's supporting a lot of that. We've also been working with the Board of Regents to secure grants on county-related issues. Over the last two years, we brought in about 1.4 million in grants to support largely workforce development efforts, and now there's some additional efforts looking into procurement, and we're eyeballing a few related to transportation. But when we talk about the analytics piece, and I notice on the screen that the colors I chose don't really highlight those examples that we had for you. But what we're focused on are reports that highlight how government works. So things like what we call our county services matrix, our interactive county profile, our levy resource guide, and things like that. We're looking at the impact of state policies on county operations and finance, and I provided to you, Mr. Morni, and one of the products we delivered on indigent services. We also look at justice-related matters in this space, and we're looking at what's happening in the public sector workforce. So how are, what are the trends out there to try to better inform decision-making? And you've been seeing reports in this vein start to roll out. We're currently wrapping up one with the Sheriff's Association on detention. And then finally, on the analytics part, is looking at how counties manage their functions. Just kind of digging in, counties can operate as silos. What we're trying to do is create comparative information across counties to improve decision-making at the local level. Now, these are some of the visualizations from our website, and what I wanted to highlight here is that we are currently updating our website to get more effective at bringing forward these tools and information to you. You're always welcome to call me where we can be helpful in this regard, but we want to be more outward-facing, getting a lot of this information out to you, and our new website will allow that. Now, I'll transition a little bit in the legislative side, and we'll talk about our intergovernmental activity related to that. First thing is, is that when we get involved in public policy at the Capitol, our lens is focused on what do bills do for county operations and county resources? That's what we do, and we utilize what we call our Legislative Policy Committee. Mr. Barelli, thank you for serving in that capacity this year. It was very helpful to have you there and having your legislative perspective at the table, and we benefited from the staff work we got to improve that dialogue. We focus on supermajority decisions, right? We want to make sure that we're staying in our lane, and we're really proud of how we execute on that. I also want to commend your legislative delegation. Senator Angus, Representative Biassucci, and Representative Gillette have been very, very collaborative with us when we go over to share information. I know you all communicate with them very effectively, but I wanted to extend my appreciation that when we're sharing additional information, they've been really great to work with. This session went long, and it didn't go long because there was so much to do. It went long because things dragged out as it related to the budget. Bills were really wrapped up early, and it was really just about how they land a budget, and you saw a lot of the coverage related to that. I do want to highlight a little bit of the budget here, and what I did is I put a time series to share a couple of key points with you. The first is, is that the legislature is focusing on one-time allocations, like divvying up money to members and then allocating those resources. And that's a good thing in many ways. They allocated about $900 million in that regard. They're not focusing on ongoing items, and that has been of an effect to some of the issues that we need them to solve that have not been included into the one-time space, and I'll touch on those a little bit in a moment. But I wanted to focus your eyes on the ending balance in fiscal year '27, where they're projecting a $52 million ending balance on a $17 billion budget. And so that really shows you that small swings in the economy or key cost drivers are really going to impact their financial ability going forward. And they're going to have to figure out at the state level how to address potential conformity to state tax changes, what they're going to do and how they're going to fund the new requirements for the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, and what, if anything, they're going to do related to Medicaid. These are all policy choices they're going to have to make, and those will impact the state's resources going forward. Why do we care about that? Because what we're trying to protect are any cost shifts to the county coffers and just make sure that things, that there's not more pressure on your budget from the state level. And so we watch that very closely. This walks you through where a lot of the budget investments were at the state level. It won't surprise you. They did some reductions in personal property tax. Public safety investment was a big point of conversation, capital projects. The governor prioritized the childcare subsidies and other things that were out there. Now, this one blew up on me, and I'm not entirely sure, but what it, and so I'll apologize for that, and we will fix that. But these are the items that we were working on that really need to be highlighted for this purpose. Some of these are ongoing issues, and as I mentioned, they're doing one-time allocations. They're not addressing things on an ongoing basis. So for example, state-funded probation officers. They've been owing resources to fund those probation officers' salary increases for a few years. They allocated, the governor did, about 10 million in the current fiscal year, but used federal money to do it. So there's no ongoing commitment that's growing to meet the needs of those probation officers. We want to make sure that gets funded and not pressed onto the county. Juvenile dependency proceedings fund. We owe this county for the work that you all did with us, Mr. Biassucci and Ms. Angus, to reconfigure this fund to make sure that you'll get a guaranteed allocation coming out of it in the future. It's been very spotty. And we were able to get a correction for the state's share of JP salaries in the budget, too. It's small, but I don't want to keep these court costs pressuring onto us, and so lawmakers did make sure that the state met its obligations there. There were a lot of conversations about pension matters. One of the issues that did make it in the budget was a half percent increase for the Correction Officer Retirement Plan employer contribution. The state did put $1 million to defray those costs related to that, but nonetheless, we made a permanent policy change, and it was in the budget. And then there's money allocated that very well could be temporary, and so the pension issue is going to continue to be something that we're going to have to look at going forward. We don't like seeing permanent policies like this put in the budget. These are other county-relevant issues that just were out there. A lot of money for law enforcement, buyer issues, and then other allocations that we've gotten over time. These are specific allocations that Mojave received. We weren't advocating for these. These were your members who secured these, and I think you're well aware of these, but I wanted to make sure you see them, and it really shows that your team working for your local interests. A lot of monies went into law enforcement across the state and other key projects that mattered locally. Few slides left that I wanted to share. We ran a few bills at the request of the counties, and they're just basic government things. Two of them came in from this county. The registered sanitarians qualifications, we wanted to make modification to that. That was successful. And then the issue related to secure behavioral regional health facilities, right? This is where Title 13 folks need a place to go when they can't be sent out into the community. The result ultimately was the specific issue here in Mojave County. That individual was accepted into ASH. So that was a good result, and I think a direct result of Senator Angus elevating this issue with this bill. The key question is how we secure ongoing commitment for the state to meet this gap in the behavioral health system, and I know there'll be ongoing conversations there. I put a couple of slides just with a smattering of bills. Mr. Barelli, when you met with us in our LPC, we were going through all manner of government bills. These are issues that came on the table that our team had to spend time on, and it's really intended to show you the diversity of policy issues that we attempt to represent your interests on. And again, our lens is always, what's it mean to the local taxpayer? What does it mean to local operations? The orange slide is about bills that actually were enacted, and so these are, we've sent out a report with all the bills that were passed by policy area with summaries to the professional staff so they're able to implement these new bills. The general effective date is later in September, and a couple of things I'd highlight for you here. One is, there was a policy change related to the Diamondback Stadium, which basically skimmed off, you know, an allocation that was distributed to the local governments. And so that's an impact to every county in the state, relatively small, but the precedent is pretty significant, right? When we start doing that kind of thing, and of course, that will grow. But that's one of those issues where the chambers of commerce get involved, and that issue is going to go. We focused on kind of minimizing some of the negative impact. Pension issues, I mentioned, there were many pension-related policies, and as you know, pension issues are irrevocable, so you want to measure twice and only cut once. So we have a very high bar for what, when we work on pension items. The ones that would have been a real threat to your general fund were not passed. There were some small items that went in place. One is a part-time employment issue related to PSPRS. That actually reflected good collaborative analytical work, and then a small change to the existing cancer insurance policy that's over at PSPRS. And our team worked on those to try to narrow the scope of exposure. Planning and zoning and housing have been a huge issue. This year, the statutes that were applied to the cities a year ago for accessory dwelling units were implemented in Title 11, and so now we are going to have to adapt to our ordinances to that new accessory dwelling unit statute. There were a lot of amendments that were put in that from the original bills, so we were pleased with the process, but it was a bipartisan desire to do something there, and so we did what we could get done in the space of the legislature. Water, I know, Mr. Lincoln Filter, you spent an enormous amount of time on water. The only thing that really was enacted, as you know, was something in the AMA area, and I know that's been a frustration in the rural communities. Row officers in the lower right. You're probably well aware that in Santa Cruz County, an elected treasurer stole close to $40 million. And so there were policy changes that were put in place this year. We supported them to enhance accountability, auditing, and various things like that in the Auditor General's office, and so we anticipate that they'll be deploying that. I think everyone was pretty shocked at what we saw down in Santa Cruz County. So I'll bounce ahead just to this slide here, and Mr. Barelli, since you spent so much time with us on Friday mornings, I wanted to show you that it wasn't for naught. And so this is a quantification. And so this is a quantification of the bills that we really spent a lot of time on, the results associated with them, the number of meetings that our team put in place to educate lawmakers, including the testimonies that Caitlin and Jacob on our team did. And so it's just how we're trying to get the message out. We view counties as partners with the state, and we're trying to serve that role to facilitate that. This is a list of the reports that we've deployed. They're technical and dense, but I know they're important for professional staff in terms of implementation. And I just wanted to do a little commercial, too, as I wrap, that we are getting ready for the next legislative session. And so we've asked all the counties to submit policy ideas. We have several. We also have several staff-driven ideas that we'll bring forward to you. These are policies as it relates to the pension system, the court system, transportation, things like that, that we've been doing for many years. We'll bring those forward for decision-making. We'd love to have you at our summit down in Yuma. This is where we get all of your colleagues together to work on our agenda for next year. We'll have a good group of legislators as well to talk about the partnership, and we're excited about just getting ourselves organized for the next legislative session. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I know I took a lot of time, but it's important for us to show you how we're working to support you, and I just want to thank you again for your partnership in our organization.
Craig, thank you. I'll put it up to the board. Any comments or questions? Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sullivan, permitted limited harassment of elected officials?
Is that what the language says on there?
I'm just curious about. I'll be looking that bill up later.
I'm going to get it to you. And if Jacob was here, he could tell you the details on it, but I will get, I will get the specifics of that. I do recall it, but not the specific details.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Your team does a great job, and we thank you for your partnership. Thank you very much. Thanks for making the trip up.
Thank you all very much.
We'll move to our second of four presentations today. Our second presentation is going to be from Mr. Steve D'Amico, Executive Director of the New Bullhead City Metropolitan Planning Organization. Welcome.
Thank you, Chairman and Board, for the time to come up here and present. Find out how to exit out of this one here. I'm here today to talk about the Bullhead City Metropolitan Planning Organization's Public Participation Plan. We are the newest MPO in the state of Arizona. We represent Bullhead City, Fort Mojave, Mojave Valley, and a portion of the Fort Mojave Indian Tribe. Before we could get any business started, we have to do our Public Participation Plan. It will be out for 45 days. We are talking everywhere, anywhere we can to get it out. I'm basically here today mainly for District 5, Ron Gould's area. We've did a lot in Bullhead. We still will continue to, but we want to make sure everybody is just important. While it's themed as the Bullhead City Metropolitan Planning Organization, Fort Mojave, Mojave Valley, and the tribe are just as important and equal in this MPO. So we'll start, I'll be very brief. There's 20 pages to this plan. I'm just going to go through the meat of it, which is on three pages right here, which will basically let us know what it's all about. So the public participation process. Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 requires outreach to underserved groups, and in 1994, presidential directives dictated, "Each federal agency shall make an achieving environmental justice part of its mission by identifying and addressing as appropriate disproportionately high and adverse human health and environmental effects of its programs, policies, and activities on minority populations and low-income populations," excuse me, sorry, "populations, which may include subgroups of elderly and disabled. Public participation implies an open process. This means that anyone who is potentially affected or just interested in the process is welcome to participate. Some of the reasons for encouraging this openness are: One, project leaders may gain new information. Participants who want a project to be completed can provide additional resources in the form of assistance, goods, or services. Public participation can be a forum for dispute resolution. Progress can be made and inflammation can occur because the project itself will be better designed with public input. The community better understands what the project is about. Input can be a warning mechanism for potential problems. Participant comments, participant comments help the project leaders understand areas where additional people may have concerns or misunderstandings. This can be used to provide better information to others who are not participating." Then we go on to the next page, 13, here. This shows that the Public Participation Plan, it's funny, we're doing a public participation on our Public Participation Plan. That's how involved we are. But we also do public participation on basically everything, almost everything and anything that the MPO does. When we go out for our Regional Transportation Plan, we will go out to the public for 30 days of public participation. When we do our TIP, which is a Transportation Improvement Plan, we go out for 30 days of public input. When we do our Human Service Transit Plan, 30 days of public input. And if we move on to page, I believe, 19. This is how it works. We develop, adopt, and revise the Public Participation Plan. This Public Participation Plan has gone through several stages during its development. These are: preparation of a preliminary draft plan, which is what you see right now; evaluation of this plan to ensure compliance with all federal regulations; review of the plan by stakeholders, including the general public, governmental entities, and transportation professionals and businesses; revision of the plan based on the above reviews; completion of a final draft plan; circulation of the draft plan for at least 45 calendar days. This includes notice to all potentially affected interests in the final draft plan. Is available for review, including placement at the MPO office and the Bullhead City MPO website, which is bullheadcitympo.org; then further review and evaluation of any further recommended changes; ongoing implementation of the plan by the Bullhead City MPO; availability of alternative formats, i.e. large prints, bell, audio, video cassettes as appropriate upon request for individuals who are blind or individuals with hearing and vision impairment; then finally, approval by the Bullhead City Executive Board. So what we're doing is we're going out into public for 45 days and get as much input as we can. We also have, have already had one town hall. We have another town hall coming up at Bullhead City, at the Bullhead City Council Chambers on September 8th at 5:30 PM in the Council Chambers. We invite everybody to go on to our website at bullheadcitympo.org. We have the full plan on there. And we have hard copies available at the Public Library at District 2, Rich Letman's Office, which is 1130 East Hancock Road in Bullhead City. We also have them at District 5 Supervisor Gould's Office, 5287 Highway 95, Unit K in Fort Mojave. We have them in the Public Library. We have them at City Hall. We have them at our office. And for any groups that would like to come out and hear about the entire plan, please get ahold of me at sdamico@bullheadcityaz.gov. Also, my phone number is 928-201-8664. And I also have a little bit of exciting news for this. Once we get this plan done and we're able to get work, we will actually start our next Public Participation Plan, because my grant writer and planner over here, she has already secured, Danielle Brunch, has already secured $250,000 grant for our transit system. So, once we get this done, we'll immediately be going out for another 30 days of public input on our transit program. And they will be doing a study, and we're hoping to possibly even move transportation out to the, from Bullhead City to the Fort Mojave, Mojave Valley area. Of course, we will have to also go out for grant funding for that, because it costs money. But also, we just put in for a SS4A grant, which is Safe Streets For All. I think we've got a very good chance of getting that. That's $2.2 million, which will cover the entire area, Bullhead City, Fort Mojave, Mojave Valley, and a portion of the tribe. Now, that is a, there's a 20%, which I call co-pay, but it's a match for that, which would be $440,000. And to cover that, we're also putting in for Arizona Smart Grant to cover the $440,000, because we know the county could use all the money they have right now to keep in the kiddies to do business. But anyway, I appreciate your time. We need to get this plan out. If anyone would like to hear about it in person, please get ahold of me through the website, my phone number. I'd be more than happy to come out and speak with you in Bullhead City, Fort Mojave, or the tribe. And I thank you for your time, Chairman and Board. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amico. Appreciate your presentation. I'd open it up to the board. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none. Thank you again very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. We'll move to our third of four presentations today. This is a presentation regarding Community Bridges, presented by Dane Binder.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for the opportunity to chat with you today.
All right. IT can help get that presentation up, but we would appreciate it.
All right, fantastic. Well, thank you so much for having me here today. It's a real pleasure to chat with you. My name's Dane Binder. I'm the Director of Government Affairs with Community Bridges, also known as CBI. And the purpose of me addressing the board today is just to let you know a little bit about what's going on in your backyard, as we're bringing in a project that is going to be of service to your community. So, my presentation is going to be quick, so feel free to raise your hand and ask questions along the way. Feel free to interrupt me, of course. So, it's Community Bridges. It's our mission to maintain the dignity of human life. Our purpose is to be agents of positive change in our communities, and our values are humility, service, and empowerment. We actually work with 14 out of the 15 counties in Arizona, so we provide services. We have a footprint, I should say, in 14 of 15 counties. So we have a variety of different programs, as you can see on this slide, that range from crisis mobile teams that go out into the community to interface with folks who have behavioral health challenges. Or they, we have crisis observation units where people can walk in, and we can help them with their behavioral health needs, whether that's substance use, psychiatric, that type of thing. We also have a service array that deals with the involuntary evaluation of individuals who are dangerous to self or dangerous to others. And then we have a variety of shelters and outpatient programs as well. And as for this specific project, we are in the process of opening up a children adolescent crisis and residential unit. So the purpose of these programs is going to be for families or kids who are unaccompanied or in the, under Department of Child Safety care, to bring them in if they're having a behavioral health crisis. So it can look, it can look like a variety of things, right? On the, on the one end of the spectrum, you've got kids who may be having some type of anxiety or, you know, maybe there's some bullying going on at school, stuff like that, and the parents just don't know what to do because they have, you know, difficult behaviors they're displaying, something like that. On the opposite end of that spectrum, you've got kids who are suicidal, actively trying to kill themselves, or maybe have tried to kill themselves. You're going to have kids who are under the influence of alcohol and drugs. And so we're opening up this center on the corner of Florence and Stockton Hill. Any family can bring their child in anytime for any reason, so long as they're over the age of five. So five to 17 is going to be the target age range for that population. Parents will actually be able to escort their children onto the unit, which is pretty atypical for a program like ours. But we feel that serving the family is extraordinarily important in helping these children, right? Because if we solve the crisis for the kid, and we send them back home with their family, what's the family going to do? Odds are, they're just going to go right back into crisis. So we want the families to be as closely involved as possible, whether that is their family of origin, or whether that's a foster care parent, or a Department of Child Safety agent. Additionally, we're opening up a residential treatment program, and that's going to be for kids ages eight to 17. So, so those are the two different programs that we'll be opening up. The residential treatment program is typically going to be an average length of stay in about two and a half months. That's going to be for kids who are just chronically struggling, right? So they're having acting out behaviors in school, they're falling behind, maybe they're on probation, maybe they are using drugs or alcohol, or they have some type of really traumatic experience when they were younger, and all these behaviors are kind of bubbling to the surface, and they're just not doing well. So those kids will be able to stay with us for a little bit longer, and we can treat them over a longer period of time. I wanted to touch on the local economic impact that these projects are going to be bringing to the Kingman area. We estimate a local annual economic impact of $6.1 million, and estimated jobs brought to Mojave County will be about 63 full-time equivalents. When you dig into these numbers a little bit deeper, these are not all going to be low-paying, minimum-wage jobs. We will have a few entry-level positions, but we are going to be recruiting nurses. We're going to be recruiting counselors and social workers. Actually, we're going to be bringing in a child psychiatrist from, from out of the area to relocate to northern Arizona. So we are going to actually be bringing these folks, whether they reside here, or flagstaff, or in Navajo County, they will be around the area, because we're going to be opening up these three programs across northern Arizona. So they'll spend some of their time here if they choose not to live here. However, nurses, those types of things, oftentimes, when we enter into rural communities, we find that recruiting can be a challenge. But we have a recruiting team that's really good about getting contract nurses to come relocate for a course of a year or two. And then we often find that through our large footprint of over 1,800 employees, someone will inevitably say, "Oh, I'm from Kingman. I want to go move back to Kingman," or "I'm from Havasu. I want to go move back to Havasu," and they'll come to work for us in that facility. And these figures are subject to change. We're still in the process of negotiating rates with health plans and those types of things. So those are, those are estimates, and they may change. So going back to the first program, I talked about our crisis unit. So it's a 24/7/365, no wrong-door philosophy. So like I had mentioned, any kid ages five to 17 can come in anytime for any reason. They will never be turned away. The length of stay in that particular program is not to exceed 23 hours and 59 minutes. That is a licensure requirement. They will be evaluated when they're there by a nurse, a nurse practitioner, or a child psychiatrist, and a clinician. And then they're going to be monitored by what we call health techs. So think about when you go to the hospital, and you have the techs that come through and kind of work as an extension of the nurse. Those are the types of employees that we'll have working with the kids and families. We're going to be coordinating real closely with outpatient treatment providers, because, again, we don't want them to come in, help them solve the crisis, and then just send them back out into the community to figure it out themselves. So we work really, really closely with the different providers. I think Southwest Behavioral Health is a big provider here, so we're going to be working closely with them. And then we're going to put together a treatment plan, and then we're going to execute it. It's going to be with the input from the parents, it's going to be with input from the kid, it's going to be the input with, the input from the probation officer, even like good friends, or pastors, or anyone that this child or family considers a strength, so long as that it's a legitimate source of support for the kid. We want them included in what that's going to look like. And then we're going to either hand them off to their outpatient provider, or if they need to go to maybe a more restrictive level of care for a longer period of time. So let's say, kids who are detoxing from alcohol, that can be deadly. So we're going to get them over to the hospital as quickly as we can, and then we're going to bring them back, and then we're going to hand them off, make sure that they go from our door straight to the door of a residential program like the one we're bringing in here. And again, parents are allowed to accompany their child onto the unit. So for the residential unit, like I had mentioned, the average length of stay, we anticipate will be about two and a half months. Admissions will include kids with chronic suicidality or self-harm, so I think of kids who cut, burn, or maimed themselves, mood disorders, trauma disorders, and/or substance use disorders. It's very uncommon to have someone that, a child that comes in with just a substance use disorder. Generally, there's a mental health component that accompanies that, so we're going to be treating both of them at the same time, essentially. We anticipate the majority admissions will be ages 12 to 17, but we can take as young as eight. And the scheduled activities will include school, so we're going to have a virtual computer lab. We're partnering with different Arizona Virtual Learning Academies to get them set up so that they don't miss school. They're going to have group treatment, they're going to have medication management, individual therapies, family therapy, time to play and exercise, probably time to play video games, a little bit of time, and time to just generally unwind. When we come into new communities to open up these programs, we focus really hard on partnerships with local community members. So law enforcement is generally going to be a huge partner of ours, because what happens when your kid runs off? Phone call to 911. What happens when the kid is trying to kill themselves? Phone call to 911. What happens when you find drugs in your child's room? Maybe a phone call to 911, maybe not. But the point is that law enforcement is oftentimes the first point of contact for these families in a crisis. So our goal is to get them from the law enforcement officer into our facility, so that law enforcement can go do law enforcement things. Our average turnaround time from the time a law enforcement officer comes to our door, they're in and out in under two minutes. Our standard is three. If something, if they're there for more than three minutes, there's been a problem, something weird happened, but two minutes is our average drop-off time. In cases of unaccompanied minors, we'll work with Department of Child Safety to get emergency admit permissions, which is pretty typical for Department of Child Safety. We've connected with Josh Frisbee here, who's a juvenile probation director from Mojave County. I'm going to present to several folks within the CJCC later this month and, and work with the juvenile probation staff so that they know what's going on with these programs and are familiar with them. We've already made contact with Kingman Regional Medical Center CEO, had a sit-down with him back in March, and his, one of his chiefs of staff, and we were able to explain to them our goal of supporting them so that these kids are not clogging up their EDs, because what happens is the ED becomes a conduit when people don't want to call law enforcement to deal with it. They, they just take their kid to the hospital because they don't know what else to do. Hospitals are generally pretty ill-equipped, generally speaking, to work with these types of medical emergencies, because they are, they tend to be physical health-specific or focused. So, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm a little bit scared of this. So we're gonna work real closely with them to get those kids out of their EDs, so that they can free that up to work with people who have, you know, physical emergency needs. And there are gonna be instances when a child comes in who's gonna need medical clearance, so we will send them to the hospital, but we're gonna get them back just as soon as they treat whatever that medical emergency is. And those decisions are made by nurse practitioners, or psychiatrists, or doctors. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. I'd open it up to the board for discussion. Superintendent Martin, thank you.
Sir, who funds this entire program?
Yeah, so a couple different funding streams. So the crisis unit is going to be funded by Medicaid dollars, and the residential unit is gonna be whatever primary health insurance their parents have. So it's generally gonna be insurance-driven for that particular program.
If the parents don't have insurance?
Then we'll find, generally, the kids are going to qualify for public health insurance, so we'll help get the parents, the application started, so that they can get that, they can get them enrolled. We're not gonna turn them away.
Okay, thank you.
Other, other questions? What was the genesis of this project? This is interesting, too.
Yeah, so I think originally it was, when they looked at claims data across northern Arizona, they being Access, they identified huge gaps, because what happens is, most often, is kids are being sent out of state for treatment. And that becomes a big barrier for families. It's one thing to go down to Phoenix or something like that, but there's such a lack of this level of care for kids, because it's hard to run these types of facilities. So they're sending them to Nevada, they're sending them to Texas, which doesn't help, because the kids are going there, they're learning these skills. The parents are oftentimes left out of the loop, or at least they're participating virtually, which is not ideal. So Access recognized that families need to keep these kids here in state, so that they can work through their treatment with them.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to our last presentation. This is a presentation and update from Economic Development Director Tammy Ersenbach. It's concerning their Economic Development Department Quarterly Activity Report.
Even when they bring it up, sorry. While they're bringing up the presentation, thank you for allowing me to come quarterly. Our next one will be done in the second meeting in November.
We get the presentation up for Tammy, please? IT could help us get the presentation up?
They're doing it.
Are they doing it now?
There we go.
Thank you.
Okay, so, there we go. So really quick, I just wanted to go through, in the strategic plan, or the SEDs, the five areas of focus are to provide resources to new and existing businesses, which we do. And this program and the presentation's gonna show how we do, we align all of these. We prioritize and align education and skilled workforce, identify and build out infrastructure, expand tourism and film industry, and we develop partnerships. So the first one, I wanted to take you from, before I started, so December 2018 to December 24th, and this is gonna be quick, but I wanted you to see the growth that's been in the last six years. So our population has grown in six years, 19,000 people. Personal income has raised, households have raised, our labor force has raised by over 5,000, and unemployment and poverty has dropped. And to me, that's really important to see, because we're seeing the right, we're seeing the right process. Education has been another one as well. We have more high school students. These are from age 25 and above. We have more people completing a high school diploma. And less, and moving on even. So at one point, we had a lot of people that were not even getting the ninth-grade education. And so that is going down, and our actual education is going up. So you can see over 4,000 have started to graduate high school. We've got more college students, and our bachelors and graduate students have, have increased. The other thing that was really exciting to me, and this is from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, so this isn't just numbers that I came up with, but it was exciting to see the new businesses that have come in the last six years. And you see, we've got a lot of construction, you've got some healthcare, some professional scientific technology, warehouse, manufacturing, transportation, those have come up some, but still quite a bit in considering what our county has had. But if you look, and I think the one thing is important, and I don't pat myself on the back, we all work together as a county, whether it's a city, or the county, or who, or the college, or whoever it is. But in this, I do know that the first few years, and I haven't watched the data for the last couple of years, but the first few years, the Small Business Development Center, we were able to work with them, and they were able to meet their goals always by May or June every year, that they had set for the year, because we worked so closely together. But as you see this slide, there's over, there's 1,269 new establishments. That's not people, not new businesses, I mean, not employees, that's new establishments in the county in six years. So then, because we have gone to a zero-base budget, we wanted to start with July 1, so that you could see the progress. And so last month, we've had 20 surveys that we went out and met with the businesses. And I know Superintendent Lincolnfilter, this has been really important to you, to see some of this data, but some of the questions was, does your business have difficulty finding qualified employees? And you'll see that, yes, that has been an issue out of the 20, 12 of them have struggled to find them. And then it goes through and shows why that is an issue, and it's skilled workforce, which is one of the biggest. The next one was, what's the biggest challenges your businesses faces? And again, the first two were our workforce, availability and trained workforce. So that's something that we, and our department is working with the college, and working with Arizona Work, and other, other partners, so that we can handle and, and take care of some of those challenges, so that we can have the workforce that we need as we bring in more businesses, and as our businesses expand. This one is how capital investment. And so it's, I think, C, 2, 3, 4, 5. Yeah, there's just under nine, just under six, just under $7 million in capital investment that's happened over the last 12 months alone. And this one here are the businesses that are planning to expand, and 50% of those, so 10 businesses are planning to expand, with expanding facilities in new space being the main reason, what they're looking for the most. So then we are able to work with those businesses and help them to find the right location, or work with them with, through our Development Services Building, to make sure that they have the right resources to get where they need to be. The next question was, have you experienced supply chain disruptions? And the biggest has been delays in shipping, which is not something that we can handle a lot on our end, unless it means making, finding out why that is happening. Is it at the other end, or is it something at our end that we can help with? And that's what we're trying to, to figure out at this point. And we don't have answers for that, but we are trying. And then, does your business have difficulty finding qualified employees? Again, it's a lack of skilled labor. Having a lot of other issues that we thought would be there, such as daycare didn't even show up. Transportation is there, but it's not as high as we anticipated. And then that's the same slide as before, but the last slide there does say that, do they, how would they rate the local business, the local government, whether it is the city or the county? And they rated us good, not excellent. We got one that said excellent, but we weren't bad. And that was exciting, because usually when we hear anything, anybody comes to the board, it's the negative. But when you go out and meet with the businesses, they'll tell you what's really happening. And so that was important for us to see that what was really happening to them, and what they, they feel is important. The other thing is, what we're doing right now is we're trying to work with the manufacturers. It's all, almost, not all of these, but most of them are manufacturers. And because a lot of those are in the industrial park in Kingman, then we're teaming up with the City of Kingman to go out, and so that they're getting the same information that we are, and we're merging together, so that we're not getting one information, they get something else, and, and then we come back and it's different stories. We want to have the same story as we work together. The foreign trade zone has always been a big question. This is going to be on your consent agenda today. And we've had our first review, and it went through, it's a basic review, went through really well, and then things changed. We knew we had to go through a second review before we could submit the actual application. But because Trump has come in, and there's been so many people applying for foreign trade zones, they've kind of changed some of the processes. So one of the processes that they, we have to change is that before, we would submit the application to the actual board for every, all the dots are dotted, the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. And now they've changed it and said, you need to go back and get a letter from the Long Beach Port, where before we had to wait, and then they would do that for us. But because of timing, they've sent that back. And the other thing is, they just felt like our resolution we had was not as, it didn't show the actual boundaries of the county as they should be. So we just changed the resolution, and that's why it's on the consent agenda. And once that's changed, then, those are really the only two things that we have to identify, and then we'll be able to send it back through for another review, and then they will give their check of approval, and we can send in the money, and send in the official application to the actual Department of Commerce Foreign Trade Zone Approval Board. So that's where we're at, and hopefully it will be through in just a few months. For tourism is part of what we do. One of the things that we, was important for us, so we could get grants, so that we could be seen, and the state could start marketing, was that destination marketing organization that you just approved. We appreciate that. One is a new website, and we have launched that, we couldn't do that without. We have a new, and I'll show you just, in just a minute, so that I can't, so I don't have to worry about going back and forth. One of the things we just finished was, when Supervisor Johnson was here, he gave some ARPA money for an ADA trail. And that's just about finished. The grand opening will be in October, but they're just finishing up the last ADA parking place, and putting up bumpers and, and guardrails, making sure that it's ready, so we can have wheelchairs go out on that, on the trail. But like I said, there will be a groundbreaking for that in October. Another thing, Superintendent Lincolnfilter, you requested was that we have a tourism magazine that we could use. And we don't have that in the funding to do the printing right now, but what we can do, and we're working on, is electronic magazine. And then maybe we can print just a small amount and get them out to the hotels locally. It's not gonna get them out to all the hotels outside the area, and, but at least we're gonna have something that will be printed, and, and be nice that we can share. And then the last thing that we're doing under this is, we're going out and finding not only locations, but people and businesses that can work in the film industry. If a business comes, and they need an electrician that can go out and work with them, we need to know who they are, so we can just have a list that they can talk to. Do we have actors in the county that they can pull from as even just people to be in the film, or the commercial, or whatever? And so we're working on that, and then we will be attending the American Film Market Expo in November. And we're partnering up with the City of Kingman and the City of Bullhead for that. Our, the city of Lake Havasu didn't get back to us in time, and we were on a time crunch, but also our booth is small, it's just a, you know, table, a 10-by-10-sized booth. And so we felt like sharing three people in the booth is gonna be a lot anyway. But we're excited, because that, we believe, is going to bring more film to their area, and it's going to show off in those areas, that they'll shut, they'll say that this was done in Mojave County. And, come on. There we go. Oh, the foreign trade zone I already talked about. I'm not sure why this has gone through a second time. We've been going the opposite way. Okay, oh, this one here is just a, just a slide of our website. If you go to exploremojavecounty.com, you can see it. It was taking a while to come up, and now as you put that in, or even explore Mojave County, just Mojave County Tourism, I think it should come up now. It's taken us a while to get to that point. And then, oh, the Northern Arizona Good Jobs Network Grant is moving forward. We will be able to have Interplay Learning up and running, hopefully after Wednesday sometime, very quickly. It's taken us a while to get through procurement, but as soon as that's paid, then we'll be able to get that going, and be able to give people the chance to have this training, some very strong training. There's over 500 different courses in there that you can take, and some are very basic. This is a screwdriver, and this is a wrench. Some of them are a lot more in-depth, so into HVAC and plumbing, electrical. It's gonna give them the basic information, so then they're ready to go understand and have the hands-on. And the, the hope is that we're going to have, and the anticipation is that we're going to have, not just through the Good Jobs, Good Jobs Network Grant, but also through other sources that we have, to be able to upskill some of our incumbent workers, as well as get our high school students ready, and then with the pipeline of those students as they're preparing to go into the workforce, as well as to help the people that want to either need a job or upskill, and give them the tools that they need. And the exciting part for me about this is that each one of the modules gives you a certificate. So you get through one, you get a certificate, and it says, yes, I really do know this information, because you're tested two or three times, and then finally at the end, so you know that what you've, they've been through, that they understand it. The other things that are in the pipeline that we're working on right now, one is Tech Week, and I'm really excited about it, because the state just announced it a few weeks ago. It's gonna be in April next year. They're bringing in anticipation of 10,000 people, businesses, looking to relocate somewhere. And we're hoping they'll come to Arizona, and we're hoping many will come to Mojave County. 10,000 influencers and 5,000 people that are financial, financially stable, able to support these companies moving here. And so the majority of the meetings that are going on are already being set in Flagstaff, Phoenix, and Tucson, not a surprise. But we have a chance to bring them here. There's going to be calendars out, and people can look at the calendar and say, hey, there's this activity going on, or this meeting, I want to meet with those people. One of the things that we're talking about is there may be a way to work with some of the other counties, and bring the people here to, right here, and have a, some type of a tour that they can go to, so that they can actually see, and take them into Lake Havasu, and Bullhead, and Kingman, and say, look what we have to offer. Maybe we can get them up to Colorado City. Look what we have to offer right here. We want you here. And we can show them that we have the broadband in all the other areas. And because it's tech, it doesn't have to be just computer-based, it can be anything. It could be a business that has a new type of robotics, machinery, or something going on, and that may be of interest. So they want us to really think outside the box. The next thing that we're doing is, we've finally come up with a part of a grant to be able to get a new economic development website, which we've been working on for a long time. And that will be starting in the near future as we go through procurement processes. And lastly, our anniversaries that we're celebrating, we already know Route 66 is 100, year, 100 years next year. America 250 is coming up, and the state has programs that they're gonna bring right to our county. And one of them is a mobile museum that they're gonna bring. And we're excited to hear more about what they can do, as well as what we can do as a county, to celebrate around the Fourth of July, this, this great nation that we have. I was, I'm old enough to say, I was in high school, and for the 200th year, and we made that. It's huge and spectacular, and we want to do even better this year for our county if we can. And then next year is the 75th anniversary for Davis Town. And that's it. Do you have any questions? I know it's been a long morning for you, so I apologize.
Questions, Superintendent Barelli?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chern. Tammy, on the ADA trails, the ARPA money, is that coming in under budget?
It's, it, we spent the full amount that we had to offer, but BLM is paying the rest of it. So it's, it's coming from them, not us.
Superintendent Martin, thank you.
Tammy, first of all, I want to say, good job in doing all this. Tremendous workload. And, and I know in our, in our working out there in Dole Springs, it's not been under the most ideal situations, but I think you've done a good job in bringing those folks together, and showing them what can be done if they'll be willing to work together and work with us. So thank you for doing that.
Other comments or questions? Tammy, I just have a couple of questions. You were talking about some of the slides pertaining-
You were talking about some of the slides pertaining to new business establishments. You said there was over 1,200 new business establishments during a certain time period.
Yes.
I'm wondering how many business establishments went out of business during that same period as well? Because that would give you the actual rate of growth.
That actually was taking those out of there. So you see one that says utilities minus four. There were a few others that didn't show exactly what they were, but that took out of everything negative. That was above what would have been taken out.
So we, we, do we have an actual number of, of business establishments during that same time period that we know that closed?
I would have to go back and look and see. I, I don't have that in front of me.
Because I think that just measuring the establishments that are new
Yeah.
is only one side of it. You have to look at the same time period, how many went out of business? And then that gives you the, the growth rate.
It was very, very minor and I just don't remember. It was like under 100 or 120 or something like, it wasn't very much.
And do we know of those new business establishments, how they break down as far as stage of business?
It would not give me that.
11 to 99?
Yeah, it would not give me that. I wish it did. I would tell, I can tell you, I would say the majority of them are going to be small businesses.
Well, yeah, that's the backbone of Mojave County's economy.
It is.
I think 99% of our business establishments are 100 employees or less.
The biggest challenge for us in Mojave County is knowing who they are. They get their tax numbers, they register, they, for their state, for the federal government, but we don't really know who they are. So it's hard for us to be able to find out who they are. And because of transparency and being careful who they identify, especially for small businesses, the federal government doesn't give us specific, who the businesses are.
Yeah, I agree with that. And that's why I think that business retention and expansion, actually going out and doing surveys and, and getting that information about how big they are. And the reason I ask that is because every business stage, you're going to have different challenges.
That's true. That's exactly.
And that's how we, that's where I think that our, our money as a, as a county is best spent. I mean, if you, you say, hey, 99% of our business establishments where we get basically all of our employment, all of our revenue, property taxes are, are this big. These are the challenges that they're all facing generally. How do we help them to continue to grow? I'd like to see more of that. And then the only other question I have is with regard to the tourism stuff. What, what is our goal with the tourism stuff? And I ask that because I know that, you know, Havasu, Bullhead, Kingman, they all have local sales tax. And they're trying to bring in people to have an experience and to take out their purse or their wallet and spend some money here, which goes to local sales tax. What's our motivation?
So, so for the county, because we don't get sales tax, what we try to do is twofold. We try and bring the businesses to outside of the cities so that they can experience what we have here, whether they go on our trails or they go to some of the smaller unincorporated cities like Oatman or Dolan Springs or, or Chloride or wherever that is. But then also get them to stay in the cities, which is bringing in more, more sales tax for the cities and supporting them. So we work very closely with the cities and try to not only work and, and get the word out of what we do, but collaborate with them and say, if they're coming to Lake Havasu and to see the London Bridge or to go on the river, let's get them to Bullhead or let's get them to Kingman or let's get them somewhere else. And so we try really hard to keep them here longer in the community and in the county as well as to stay longer to eat here. And maybe they are eating in our establishments that are unincorporated, that helps our businesses. So it doesn't matter where they're at, it's to just grow what we're at, what we have.
Yeah, I don't dispute that. And I'm sure that the cities are happy that we're doing that at the county, spending county resources to bolster their local sales tax dollars.
They are.
But how does that really benefit in a, in a arena where we have very finite resources? What's the ROI for Mojave County, spending Mojave County dollars to bolster local sales? That's my only question.
Well, and for us, we know that as we bring people in, whether it's the unincorporated into the cities, by bringing them into the city, we actually have businesses that are willing to relocate here. After they've been here, they come back once or twice, they like it, they want to stay here. I talked to somebody just yesterday in passing and that's exactly why they're here is because they came two or three times and loved it. We want them, the, the population, we want people to come back and live here as well. And we don't care where they live. They're going to have a home, they're going to buy a home, they're going to have property tax, whether it's business or residential. So it's going to benefit the county either way.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Gould.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as the accuracy of the jobs survey, I've been a small businessman for about 45 years. If you are from the government and you're going to come and ask me a question, unless you're going to arrest me, I'm not going to answer. So, uh,
Well, we, I'm, I'm.
As far as the accuracy, it, you know, overall, it's probably a ballpark number, but it's not, never going to be a, you know, a, a sharp survey because that, most people are like me, you don't want to see the government show up at your front door. It's the department of making me sad, basically.
I will tell you, there's some businesses that don't want to talk to us and we're not going to force them. But the ones that do and are open and willing, then we're there to support them and help them and give them the resources that they need. And so that's what we're there for. And we have been able to walk away and say, hey, this one needs this resource, this one needs this resource. What can we do to help make sure that you have that to be able to succeed? Whether it's, it's expanding or whether it's just staying here, we don't want to lose them. We want to make sure that they have those resources.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Morgen.
I would, I would just add that when we're talking about the, the lack of a county sales tax, when we're talking about tourism specifically, those dollars that are spent here within the county, even absent a county levied sales tax, we do see, still see a, a, a share of those through the statewide shared sales tax revenue. So those dollars that are, you know, tourism dollars that come into the county that are spent here, the county does see some of that in the form of the state shared sales tax, although it is less significant than if we had a county levied sales tax. Just wanted to make that, that point clear as well.
All right. I'll move to consent agenda. Items number five through 48. Supervisor Letman, would you like to remove anything from consent this morning?
I would, item 40.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 44 and 46.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Barelli. And Supervisor Martin. And I will remove item number 18. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent as presented minus items number 18, 40, 44 and 46.
So moved.
I have a second.
Chairman Lincolnfelter, were we going to take 45 off as requested?
Oh, sure, I'll, I'll add number 46, or excuse me, 45, is that right?
Yes.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve consent as presented minus items number 18, 44, or excuse me, 40, 44, 45, 46.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll go to item number 18. This is approve the continued use of City of Tucson Cooperative Contract for Procurement Card Program. Wondering if this program had a rebate amount? Is, is that rebate amount still in effect? Let's see Director Acton coming down to the podium. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Lincolnfelter. It is the same program that we've been using. So the City of Tucson has gone through a massive re-solicitation for all of their banking services, including P-card. It's taken them a long time. So this is an extension of the existing contract, all of the rebate. Everything remains the same as we've had previously. We're doing this essentially so that we can maintain our P-card services without doing a massive transfer to a new P-card provider. And over the course of the next year, we're going to look at what options exist. If there are options out there that exist with better rebate programs or similar rebate programs, we'll work with the CFO on that.
Great. And just for the board's information, and I don't expect you to give, you know, all of the ins and outs of their formula and stuff like that, but can you give an overview of just the rebate component of that P-card program?
I can give you a very brief overview.
Sure, that's all I'm looking for.
So it, it's actually a very complicated formula. We have looked into it. It depends on the dollar value of the purchase price itself. So each individual purchase hits a certain threshold. High dollar purchases get a higher rebate, lower purchases get a lower rebate. And then it also looks at the aggregate spend of, I want to, I think they call it like an Arizona group, but all Arizona groups that participate in this contract and participate in the program, they look at the aggregate spend of all of those groups to calculate the rebate. So it's not as simple as saying we get a 1% rebate on all purchases. It's a matter of what type of purchase was it? And then what's the total spend of all participants in that program? We have reached out to the vendor themselves and asked them to give us additional information so that we can see specifically how our rebate is calculated. Historically, it has generated anywhere from $50,000 to $90,000 of revenue, which offsets the procurement department's general fund impact.
That's great. And I'm glad that they, I mean, it's, it's pretty smart to, to base it off of all participants cumulative spend. Are there any other opportunities moving forward with, I mean, do we pay our electric bills, utility bills and things like that to try to bolster that rebate amount?
I will say we walk a fine line between control and oversight and use of the P-card. I could work with the finance department to determine areas that are low risk to use our P-card on. Generally speaking, P-card expenses for the county are those purchases of $5,000. Yeah, $5,000 or less, sorry. I had to remember if we changed it to 10,000. So generally speaking, it's 5,000 or less unless there's a reason to use the P-card or there's not additional charges. We can, procurement can work with finance and the P-card administrator to allow purchases in excess of $5,000. But to kind of have control and visibility on all spend, we have been putting more of those large things like our cell phones on a purchase order because then we can track it. I know that there are options to do kind of an e-payables, P-card payment within munis, but we haven't really tested that yet. So there's a lot of things that probably over the course of the next year, we do need to explore to see, is there a way for us to walk that fine line of oversight control, but also take advantage of rebates?
Appreciate that, yeah. And I, I'd offer that to my fellow board members. I think if we're looking for low hanging fruit, and maybe some, some additional dollars to come back to the county that we ask the staff to kind of look at what we can use that P-card for. If there's a rebate that we get money back every year, I mean, we can get an extra, extra money is extra money.
Chairman Lincolnfelter, I'll just, I would just add that, you know, you asked, are we paying our utility bills using the P-card? We have seen a shift the last several years where a lot of the vendors, if we make payment by a, a credit card, they're tacking on a service fee. And so the service fee percentage generally exceeds what the rebate percentage is. And so there, there are certainly still some vendors where it's advantageous to the county to use the P-card. But there has been a decline in some of the types of, of services and goods that we, we pay with the P-card because of that fact. Utility companies specifically, I did have staff look at which utility bills we are still paying with P-cards. The ones where we don't see a service charge, we, we do continue to pay most of those with a P-card. As it, as it pertains to the e-payments, or e-payables that Tara mentioned, that is, that is a program, we can certainly look into it as a program that the vendors themselves have to opt into. We can't force them to participate. But if they are willing to opt into it and accept payment in that manner, then it is certainly something that, that would add to the rebate.
Thanks, yeah, it's, it's an area to explore. And once you get all the information about exactly how the rebate program works, I mean, if you go vendor by vendor, you know, and just do the math and what you're going to get versus what you're going to spend, maybe it makes sense. I'd make a motion to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do you have it, so ordered? Thank you. We'll move to item number 40. Set a public hearing for September 15th, 2025, for the board of supervisors to hear and approve the adoption of BOs Resolution 2025-151, a resolution establishing a $10 fee for every writ served on behalf of a justice of the peace by a constable in civil actions and to require the monies collected from the writ fees to be deposited in the Constable Ethics Standards and Training Fund for their direct staff to provide proper notice of the public hearing. This is put on by constables, Supervisor Letman.
I understand this is just a, trying to set a public hearing, but this item and going through the background material just confuses me. Why we're doing this, what role the justices of the peace play in this? What's, what's this training fund? So before we even get to the public hearing status, can we have input from either courts or staff on what's this increased fee all about?
Now, we're constables. Anybody from the constables here?
Chairman Lincolnfelter, Supervisor Letman, thank you. This, uh, this item, the increase in the writ fee was something that was passed during legislative session this year. I do have some concerns about this. We are working to get some answers from CSA. Pinell County continued a similar item because they're, they're also wanting answers. The Constable Standards and Trainings Board collects these fees via the county constables. They make those funds available to the county constables for grants in the form of grants for training or equipment. The, the big question is it looks like the, the constable board has been carrying a pretty significant fund balance for the last several years in excess of, of its annual operating expenditures. And the grants appear to also be underutilized by the constable. And so we're, we're looking to basically get, get some more information from the board, the constables board in regards of whether this fee increase is actually needed. And so my recommendation, and I'm not sure if, if Mr. Anderson is still here and would like to, to chime in, but my recommendation would be that we don't set a public hearing for September, that we push that out to the second meeting in October in order for us to allow to continue to work with CSA to get the answers to the questions that we have.
Mr. Anderson, do you want to come up? Do you have something to offer?
Chairman Lincolnfelter, board members, supervisors. Just ditto to what Luke said. I did speak briefly with Presiding Judge Moss on this. He's, again, out of town today, unfortunately. He would have been here, but he had, he wanted to gather some of that same information and get a little bit of better background. The constables have talked to him about the, the need for more training, but there does appear to be a pretty good balance in there that would allow them to get the training they need. So he wanted me to gather some additional information and I, I can certainly work with Luke on that. And if the board would like to push it back a little bit, we'll work on gathering some of that information.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Supervisor Letman?
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve this item, but I'm going to change the public hearing date to October 20th, 2025.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second? Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? I appear to have it, do you have it, so ordered? Thank you. We'll move to item number 44. Accept the renewal appointment of Colin Patio as a commissioner of the Mojave County Planning and Zoning Board, representing Supervisor District Number Four. Supervisor Martin, effective September 6th, 2025 through September 5th, 2029. This is pulled by Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a request from members of the public that wanted to speak to the item.
We do have two members, it looks like, of the public that have signed up to speak on this. The first is Arthur Ramos. You want to come up to the podium, Mr. Ramos? And then Jennifer Esposito is on deck.
Good morning. My name's Arthur Ramos. I live in Golden Valley on Aguafria there. I, I want to oppose this from going through. Now, to be clear, I don't know this person. But we, I feel, and I think many people in the community feel that there's been, let's say, a misrepresentation of, of our desires when it comes to the zoning and planning committee. And so we requested that maybe some community members, more people might be involved in the, in the committee, zoning and planning. Because I understand you all designate someone to be on that board and then they have staff. I believe that's the way it goes. But there was an incident that we recently had to deal with that the zoning and planning didn't absolutely follow the correct protocol or whatever. And, and we were told that it was a computer glitch, that they only made that mistake because it was a glitch. And I don't know if this person was directly involved with whatever it was. However, that protocol wasn't followed. It showed us that, two things, that one, the, the committee and the staff were willing to go ahead and, and do the meeting that they had. And the, the builder was also willing to go ahead and go through with the, even though. was also willing to go ahead and go through with it, even though it wasn't following protocol. So that's not, how do you say, bargaining in good faith, in my opinion. So hopefully we can have this turned down and then maybe make some changes to the selection of the, I don't know if it's the staff or just the committee members on that zoning and planning committee, so that we can get better representation from the community as far as those decisions that get made at that level. I thank you for listening. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer Esposito.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito. Kingman, I know that all five board members are Republicans. At least that's how your voter registration is. It's very clear that Mr. Patillo is not a Republican. Aside from the fact that he endorsed Supervisor Martin's independent opponent on his public Facebook page in the election, which, you know, he's, apparently is not a problem, I'd like to tell you what Mr. Patillo thinks of Republicans and posts publicly, which although Supervisor Martin says is his free speech, we do have and like a code of conduct and an ethics thing that board members have to follow. So what they do in their personal life and their personal, quote, "free speech" does matter. Someone posted by the name of Chris Davis in a comment, GOP or grand old pedophiles, to which Mr. Patillo responded, Chris Davis, you can say that again. Those sex criminals and their congressional enablers are disgusting degenerates. Then in another post on Facebook, I'm not sure who exactly which women he was referring to, but it's very clear that Mr. Patillo is adverse to women in general, because what he said to someone named Kathleen Wedgwood Reed was, yes, they are wrong. They're women, triple exclamation point. If they were real Christians, they would be silent and not aspire to such offices as the Bible commands. Now, aside from the fact of what Mr. Patillo said about school board candidate Danielle Keck, myself and other people, the reality is, is that on the board, he failed to actually show up in person for months on end. He just phoned it in. Then when he did bother to start showing up, he rudely interrupted other members of the board, mostly the women. He rudely interrupted recognized speakers at the podium. He's arrogant. He's entitled. He's a holdover from the previous administration. We had another very qualified candidate apply, and she didn't even get an email response saying, thank you for applying. She was just completely ignored. I think she found out on Facebook that Mr. Martin had decided he wanted to continue with Mr. Patillo. But Mr. Patillo is on the General Plan Advisory Committee, the one that was determined to have broken open meeting law. Mr. Patillo does not deserve another tenure. You cannot tell me, having served as long as he has on planning and zoning, that he doesn't know open meeting law, that he didn't know that what they were doing was wrong, and yet they did it anyways. And then he approved his own recommendation. Nobody in District Four is being served by Mr. Patillo. Thank you.
That's the last speaker that we have. Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no opinion on this matter. It's Supervisor Martin's job to appoint. Two says representatives. I just thought I would give the opportunity for the members of the public to speak.
Thank you. Supervisor Martin, would you like to address?
Sure. I don't know how many people realize or have ever seen Mr. Patillo's resume. I don't know how many people have seen the other applicant's resume. If you had, and all of the board members have a copy of the resume, they would see that while I don't take any kind of pleasure in some of the things that Mr. Patillo has said, but then again, I don't take any kind of pleasure of hearing what Ms. Esposito says. But both of them have the right to say what they want. So let's be fair. If she can get up here and criticize people, call our county manager a liar, and, and her husband did the same thing to me this morning, then I think Mr. Patillo, even though he's in, he's an avowed Democrat, to me, that has nothing to do with the fact of what he does when he serves on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Patillo, unknown to I'm sure many, is a sole caretaker of an invalid elderly mother. He has to make arrangements to have her taken care of for him to physically attend a planning and zoning meeting. Mr. Patillo is allowed, as we are, the board, in a situation where we cannot physically attend, to call in and be part of the meeting by telephone. He's done that. So I say this. All of the, all of the board up here has seen his recommenda, or his resume. I've read it, and quite frankly, he's a very educated man, and he has a lot to offer to this county. Again, I won't speak to his personal conduct. I don't agree with a lot of it, and he knows that. But as a person making a nomination, I look for the most qualified person that can serve on that board and help the Planning and Zoning Commission go through some really intricate matters that he has a lot of expertise in. I'm sorry, the other applicant does not have that. And, you know, I was the one that encouraged her to apply, because I said, hey, anybody want to apply? Do it. I had two applications, Mr. Patillo and the other applicant. So I say this. We don't have to agree with politics. We don't care, I don't think, what political party it belonged to or who they endorse. That's not the issue. The issue is bottom line. This guy can serve the public, in my opinion, very well. He was nominated and appointed before by Supervisor Jean Bishop. I talked to her about that appointment, and she felt confident in his abilities, his education, and his work experience. He worked a long time for Mojave County and has done a lot for this county. So today, I absolutely have no problem in nominating him to keep his seat on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? Okay, additional discussions? Supervisor Barelli?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And to that point, as far as his behavior on the board of interrupting and going out of turn or whatever, that's up to the chairman to control the behavior of the board. That's, that's completely up to the chairman to control.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Any other discussion? We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Thank you. We'll move to item number forty-five. Sitting as the Board of Equalization, approve the Board of Equalization hearing officer's recommendations regarding petitions for review of real and personal property valuation. We do have one person that signed up to speak, Mr. Archie Jackson, if you'd like to come up to the podium and have your three minutes. Thank you very much.
Oh, hi. This property is six, five, five, three, Todd Dillto in North Golden Valley. So I've been there about four years. I'm from out of state. I had a giant boat in Los Angeles. I had to get out of there and I bought that. I didn't look at it. It's a heavy fixer. I paid top dollar. I was high bidder out of eleven, blind. And normally in America, the assessor appraiser will just value the property of what it's sold for. But in this case, it didn't. And so he's using a, a value that over the years has appreciated, whereas had it just been assessed properly, there would be no complaint on my part. There would be no issue. And it's just a major waste of time. So my valuation, had that happened like it would in, in the rest of America, would have been, twenty twenty-five, my valuation would have been thirty-three, five hundred, thirty-three thousand, five hundred. Twenty twenty-four would have been thirty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-six. Twenty twenty-three would have been thirty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine. And twenty twenty-two would have been thirty thousand, six hundred. And that's full cash value. So that's, that's my position. Anything I say with him, it gets nowhere. It's just delete, 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 delete. Like arguing with Satan.
Okay. If that's all, then we appreciate your testimony today.
Okay. Can I communicate via email with the board?
Oh, of course. Yeah. The best way to do that is to, to email our clerk of the board, and she'll make sure that all five members of our board do receive whatever.
With more examples and, you know, for my case. And also, in terms of revenue generation, I have some, some thought, you know, for the county.
Just send those to the clerk of the board. She'll make sure that we get.
Those will remain confidential, right?
Make sure that you label them confidential.
So it's really nice out here. Everybody likes it. Everybody talks to. I really like it here. You know, the ability to live in an RV on your land for a hundred ninety dollars a year is, is a real plus. I think there would be a stampede if people knew about that, you know, in the rest of the country. So there's only one other place I found that you can do that. In Texas, I came across a place you could do that. But generally, in America, how many places can you do that? Is this a question I'm asking? No replies. Who is my representative? Okay. Well, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Or I see that we have the assessor, Supervisor Martin?
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say. Would it be proper since Ms. Kinch is here? Could we have her come up and address this gentleman's concerns? She's the expert.
This has gone, this has gone before the Board of Equalization. It looks like the hearing officer, and they have provided a recommendation. So I'm not asking you to, can you maybe just fill in the?
That's fine. We'll fill in the blanks.
Methodology of your assessment?
Yes, Chairman. Thank you, Board, for having us. We want to take care of any concerns that we have in regards to our appeals. So I came down with my chief appraiser, as well as my chief deputy, so we could give you the explanation of where the concern was. Dennis Wheeler?
Morning, Board. I'm ready for any questions you have about the valuation.
Well, what, what differs from the county's valuation and this gentleman's valuation? What do you base that on?
Well, he, when he appealed, he based it on what he paid for it in twenty twenty. It is our, we don't believe that that's still a valid value for today or going back four years. He indicated that he was, his issue was the, the condition of the house. We asked for access to the house. He denied it. So there's no way for us to make an accurate adjustment to his house unless we see the issues at hand. So that was what we presented to the board. She, no change all four years except one. She was concerned about the fact that in twenty twenty-three, the land value was eighty-three hundred, forty-one dollars. And then in, I'm sorry, in, in twenty twenty-three, it was eighty-three hundred dollars. And then in twenty twenty-four, it goes up to sixteen thousand. And then in twenty twenty-five, it goes back down to nine thousand. So what she did was she lowered the full cash value in twenty twenty-four to match the twenty twenty-five value. That was the decision of the board.
Thank you.
Chairman Lingefelter, Board of Supervisors, my name is Darren Rasmussen. I'm the Chief Deputy Assessor for Assessor Kinch. And maybe just a little bit of clarification on our statutory obligation on how these things are valued. We are not a Proposition Eight state like California or whatever parts of the country the petitioner may be referring to. We're by Title forty-two, eleven, oh, oh, one. Unless there's a statutory methodology dictating how they're valued, full cash value is synonymous with market. Now, we do consider subject sales. This particular sale he's referring to, as you heard him say, he was the highest bidder. This was a bank foreclosure sale for which he bid the top bid. Again, by our research, it appears to be below market value. What got us out to the property was the discovery that one of the ancillary buildings were removed. So we are, again, statutorily obligated to correct our, I won't call it mistake, but our listings in our, in our system still had a metal ancillary building for which we went out and removed off our records, and we presented him with what's called a notice of proposed correction. So it falls under the, the notice of error statutes. We notified him properly through statute. That gives the taxpayer the ability to accept or dispute. He disputed based on the value. So that's kind of the basis of, of what this, what this whole thing was about. So we, we said, okay, let's go back out. Let's inspect the property. He's claiming the wiring's torn out, and there's damage to the inside and, and other circumstances that would affect the value. And we requested, okay, well, we, we, we need to see the inside to verify the condition in order to make adjustments. That's, that's our mandatory requirement overseen by the Department of Revenue. He refused access. So there's not too much that we can do when, when we refuse that access. And I, and I, I understand his right to his privacy. But again, we have statutory obligations and we're overseen. These notice of proposed corrections are required by statute to go to the Department of Revenue and be reviewed. So we're just following our statutory requirements. He was able to take advantage of every opportunity to dispute it, appeal it. We had somebody from the State Board of Equalization come out and listen to the hearing. He, he rejected being sworn in. And, and so really, our hands are tied as to what we can do. So we rely on the, on the hearing commissioner to come back with this recommendation that's been, been forwarded to you guys.
Supervisor Martin, you have any questions?
Yes. Did he tell you why he would not let you in to do the inspection?
No, there was no explanation.
No explanation.
Karen Davis, can you just give an overview? This has been heard by a hearing officer.
Correct. My understanding is that this is an appeal from the hearing officer to the County Board of Supervisors and can be further appealed to Superior Court afterwards. But your issue, this is essentially a hearing. It's not a public hearing, but it is, think of like an appeal for the abatement. And the board issues a, a decision to approve the Board of Equalization hearing officer recommendations or make an adjustment to the assessor's figures. And either side has the ability to appeal it out to the court if they so choose.
Thank you. I'd open it up to additional board discussion or motion. Supervisor Barelli?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just to be clear, this adjustment right now is in, is, actually goes to the benefit of the resident property owner, correct?
Correct. Yes. He received a refund based on the removal of that ancillary building. So the full cash value of the entire property was reduced for the, the years that it was present and three year back. So the value was reduced and he'll receive a refund.
If this passes, Mr. Chair, if this passes, this is a benefit for the homeowner.
Refund is implemented. Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you. Any additional discussion or did you entertain a motion? Supervisor Martin?
I make a motion that we uphold the county's position on this.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second? I'll second that. Any additional discussion? Supervisor Letman? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
I appear to have it. We have it's ordered. I'll move to item number forty-six. Approve and sign revised BOS Resolution Number twenty-two forty-four dash one six seven Mojave County Foreign Trade Zone, including changes of proposed boundaries. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm curious if this makes the entire county a free trade zone. Or foreign trade zone. Let me restate that.
Yes, yes. The whole county boundary, so they're included. We have four magnet sites that we've already gone through and worked with the taxing entities to make sure that they agree to have them come in. But the whole, it doesn't matter where you are in the county, you would be able to utilize the services.
And what's the reduction in property taxes to a person that's in a foreign trade zone?
It depends, and I don't know that exactly, but it's somewhere, it goes down to about five percent.
Rather than fifteen point five percent, they pay five percent?
Approximately, and I don't have that exactly. So, but what happens is when you are bringing in a new business, you're going to still get more property taxes as you build on that, that bare land. So, and that's where most of this is coming from. I haven't had anybody so far come to me and say, hey, I've got an existing business. We want to do this. Everyone we've worked with is going to be new businesses that are building.
But you had limited areas before.
Pardon me? No.
The four areas.
No, this is anywhere. We've, we've gone out and searched lots of places. We've talked to a lot of businesses that are not in the magnet sites.
The four areas that are identified were the only four areas that were in the proposed foreign trade zone. So you wouldn't have people in the cities that are not in the foreign trade zone looking to convert their business to a foreign trade business zone.
They would be part of that as well.
Now, they, under this, they would, but previously they would not.
Well, it was still, it was just worded wrong, and that's the reason it's been brought back. It wasn't that it was, anybody was ever left out before. It was just that the way that it was worded before didn't include, it wasn't very specific that the whole county boundaries were included.
I asked you that question at the previous hearing, I'm pretty sure, whether the entire county was included in the foreign trade zone.
And I would always say yes.
At the time, you did not. You said no, I believe, but we can look it up. It's irrelevant anyway, but the point is no one's asked to convert because they didn't believe they were in the foreign trade zone.
So, well, no, that's not exactly true. We've had some that said maybe down the road, but we just don't do enough business to make it worth to convert over.
Sure. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. We have one person sign up to speak.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito, Kingman. I know that I've heard a lot, you know, Republicans like to say local control, local control. But we need to eliminate the foreign trade zone altogether because it eliminates local control and hands it over to the federal government. So if you guys want local control, you don't want this. You know, one of the other things is that if I'm correct, about seventy thousand dollars has been allocated of taxpayer money for private consulting to establish this. And there are additional costs for ongoing management and compliance because you have to comply with U.S. Customs and Border Protection regulations. And so this isn't, you know, some cheap free thing. This costs the taxpayers money. Moreover, foreign trade zones require significant administrative oversight, not just CPB, you know, but there is no local board. Only the federal government's board controls the foreign trade zone. So now we have a monkey wrench in the works since this was originally approved, and that's Trump's tariffs. We didn't even get close to ninety deals in ninety days. There's a half a dozen. There's punitive tariffs. There's very little likelihood that foreign companies are now going to become running to Mojave County. And in other locations with foreign trade zones, the employment benefit has been mostly low paying, short term, or people brought in from outside of the area. So it's not like it's something that's going to benefit people looking for work here in Mojave County. And as Supervisor Gould has pointed out, they pay less property taxes. So I think that the Board needs to reject this completely. You know, we don't need to federalize Mojave County. We have enough government bureaucracy. You know, and moving forward this, in another three and a half years, who knows who will be president? Who knows who will be running that foreign trade zone board or how that might play out? But I think we need American jobs and American businesses in Mojave County, the kind that provide long-term, stable employment, good paying jobs, trade jobs, things like that. So I would urge the five of you to actually, you know, boot this thing out. It shouldn't have been approved to begin with by the previous board. It shouldn't be approved by this board. It's costing us money. There is, has been no financial benefit. I don't perceive that there will be any financial benefit. So do the right thing and, you know, kick the foreigners out and kick the feds out. Thank you.
Tammy, can you address? This isn't just something that, that foreign companies use. This is something that American companies use as well. Is that not right?
Exactly. Excuse me. Thank you, Supervisor, Chairman Lingenfelter and Supervisors. That's exactly right. The foreign trade zone is set up specifically to help our local businesses or bring in new businesses that are going to be doing business in our county to give them the competitive edge that they would have if for businesses outside of the country. So as they bring in the business that they're going to be working with, they bring in something from outside the area, they will be able to either have reduced tariffs or postpone the, paying the tariffs until they actually send it out for sales or even zero tariffs on that product. So an example would be if you bring in, and the consultants use a cell phone, you bring in the cell phone and the battery, you put them together, it becomes a working item. You send it back out, out of the country, which we're doing. It's not something that we're not doing. We want to bring in business to our county. And we want our businesses to not only do foreign, foreign business as well as domestic. They do that, then they don't have the tariffs that they have to pay. If you bring in something that sits on the shelf and six months later it's sent out back east or somewhere else domestically nationally, then they don't pay the tariffs on that until it leaves, until it goes out to sale. So that saves their money on those tariffs until the time is that they're ready to actually get the money back and they can utilize their money differently and better. And then thirdly, if they bring in something like a sheet of metal and you cut it into pieces, you don't have to pay tariffs on the waste. You only pay tariffs on that product that you're going to be making into something else and sending it out nationally. Or again, possibly if it goes out internationally back, it goes back out, then you may not have tariffs. So it might be reduced tariffs. But it's to help our local businesses, our businesses here in the United States, in Mojave County, to be competitive to the other, other countries and the other businesses.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
What that also does is gives an advantage to a manufacturer that's using foreign produced products rather than U.S. produced products also.
It can, but some of those products are not even manufactured here. So that's the only way that we can get them.
You're supposed to wait till I pause.
Pardon me?
You're supposed to wait till I pause.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were finished. I apologize.
No, I think it gives them an advantage over American made product because they don't have to pay the tariff until the product gets shipped out. So it just gives them one more advantage to buy a foreign product over buying a American or domestic produced product. Thank you.
Right, Tammy?
I don't know how you want me to respond to that. I think I.
It's rhetorical, so you can take a stab at it or not. It's up to you.
I think it's up to the businesses. That's up to them to decide, but obviously I do know that there's a lot of products that we don't have manufactured here in the United States that they need to be able to utilize. And that's what the, the whole focus is. It's not to take.
Because Nixon administration gave most favored nation status to China so that we could buy bullets for the Communist Chinese, so who are now our mortal enemies. And the theory was if we free traded with them, they would become our friend. That was flawed.
Any other questions?
Yeah, any, any other questions?
I yield.
Thank you. Any other questions? Otherwise, entertain a motion. We have a second. Motion dies for lack of a second. Supervisor Borelli, thank you.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we table this for until the next board meeting, more examination.
Thank you.
Doesn't need to be a substitute motion because my motion died.
It doesn't need a substitute motion. It's just a motion. We have a motion, an actual motion. Do we have an actual second?
Second.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do you have it? It's ordered. Okay, that takes us to our public hearing. Our one and only public hearing. Item number forty-nine, going to open the public hearing, a discussion of possible action regarding A, deny public petition requesting county highway designation for East Tomahawk Drive from East Bandit Drive to East Drift Stone Lane, East Bandit Drive from East Tomahawk Drive to East Bandit Lane, and E, Chuck Wagon Drive from East Bandit Lane to East Chuck Wagon Lane. B, approve the adoption of BOS Resolution Number twenty-five dash one four nine, designating East Tomahawk Drive from the end of pavement to East Bandit Drive, a distance of approximately point five eight miles, as a county highway. We have one, two people signed up to speak during the public hearing, first being Susan McAlpine. You'd like to come up to the podium, please. And Debbie Haskin, you're on deck.
Chairman Lingenfelter and county supervisors, as you know, my name is Susan McAlpine from Bandit Lane in La-Zy U Phase Two. In June, I had the opportunity to stand before you and ask you for your support in approving a highway department study of La-Zy U Phase Two roads and submitted forty-three resident signatures on the required petition. Today, I'm here to ask you to approve Resolution twenty-two five one forty-nine dash B, designating East Tomahawk Drive from the end of the pavement to East Bandit Drive, approximately point five eight miles, as stated in the resolution. Respecting the Board's time, rather than asking residents to come, I have provided you with a list of a hundred and six property owners taken from county records who would all benefit from this resolution as they are required to travel this portion of road to reach their properties. In the last week, I've spoken to the vast majority of them, and they also strongly support this resolution. So therefore, I request your vote positive for one forty-nine, twenty-two five one forty-nine B. And just this morning, just to let you know, as we came here, we followed a commercial truck and a trailer trying to leave La-Zy U. It took them six minutes to traverse point five eight miles. So please vote yes. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie Haskin. Thank you guys for listening to us. I really don't have too much to add to what Mrs. McAlpine said. I would note that traveling up this road is not easy and it's kind of indicative for emergency services sheriff to get up there in a timely manner because it is, it is so rough. And we appreciate anything that you can do for us to remedy this road so we can get back and forth as easy as possible. Thank you.
Okay, those are the only two that had actually formally signed up to speak on item number forty-nine. We're still in public hearing, so once I close public hearing, I'll ask, is there anybody else? Is there anybody else in the audience wish to speak during public hearing? The gentleman in the front, you raised your hand. We're on the item number forty-nine right now. We're in public hearing. You can speak to your supervisor after that. Jennifer Esposito, you wish to speak on item number forty-nine during the public hearing?
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to speak in support of this. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak during the public hearing on item number forty-nine? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Open it up to the board. Supervisor Martin?
I had a question from Ms. Haskin. I wanted to know what her address was and did she live in La-Zy U?
Sure, now's the appropriate time after close of public hearing. Thank you for coming down.
Sorry. Our address is Bandit Way, which is right off of Bandit Lane. So, yeah, we live in Phase Two. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate that. I'd open it up to the board for discussion. Anybody? Supervisor Gould, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Lottowski, can you come down?
Good morning. County highways generally go somewhere. Can you tell me where this road goes?
Yes, I have a map. If we, maybe you can pull it up. IT should have it, give you a better perspective. But Chairman Lingenfelter, members of the board, Supervisor Gould, I do want to express that this is a singular county highway petition. However, it involves, of course, three roadways. Tomahawk Drive is the most significant roadway here. There is an existing paved portion of Tomahawk Drive which comes out of La-Zy U Drive. La-Zy U Drive is a primary road in and out of the greater La-Zy U residential area. It connects Walpiment Road. Tomahawk Drive does provide a certain level of collector function, collecting roadway, collecting traffic off of the existing Tomahawk Drive that goes further westward as well as Bandit Drive and Chuck Wagon Drive. The Board adopted fourteen criteria by which county highway petitions consider, one of which is serving some kind of collector function. But by and large, staff and myself preparing this county engineer's report, considering each roadway individually, do reason that none of the roadways really hit the three main considerations, which are to serve inner neighborhood traffic or regional traffic. None of these roadways would serve any governmental facilities or really any commercial areas per se, business areas. Walpiment Road is a great example for what is a bona fide county highway. It provides access between, say, La-Zy U and Pine, the Pine Lake subdivision, of course, Greater Kingman. But I do see with Tomahawk Drive for the point five eight miles coming off the existing paved portion, going over to a Chuck Wagon Lane, that that particular segment presents two things, one of which is it's a very curvilinear road, has a very substantial profile, a vertical profile to it, which is challenging to continue the ongoing regular road maintenance. Our crew does a fantastic job. We continue to maintain it as a non-surface roadway, but it does precipitate some additional washboarding, particularly just days after a grading service. And that's just attributed to the force of the vehicles on a, on a, on a, on a vertical profile roadway. So staff does see a reasonable consideration that that point five mile, point five eight miles be considered just for the purposes of a potential future project. I know what that project would look like. I don't have that project program in our budget. The Board of Supervisors would have to give direction to staff at some future time. I estimate that project, if it were to be undertaken, to be about two hundred thousand dollars. And that's only if we do it in-house with the opportunity to access potential future millings that could be generated in some I-40 future pavement preservation project. And again, I don't know when that's going to happen exactly. I do believe there may be some pavement preservation projects coming down the road. So apologize for a long-winded answer, but that was pretty much the premise for the staff recommendation for the point five eight miles was, one, it is a challenging section to maintain, although we do our best that we possibly can. And two, it does serve just that section somewhat of a collector function for the three other roadways coming into that area.
Do you know off the top of your head how many miles of unpaved residential road we have in the county?
Oh, yes, about twelve hundred, twelve hundred miles.
So we've got about twelve hundred miles.
Yes, about twelve hundred and fifty miles.
And if a developer comes in to develop a project, who pays for the roads inside that project?
The developer would be responsible, especially under a subdivision arrangement to provide for, you know, potential improvement to, to the extent of hard surfacing paving.
So they generally don't come back later and ask the taxpayers to pay to pave their road?
I've only seen these few petitions that have come. I've only seen these few petitions that have come, come across our desk every now and then that request such accommodation. But no, the subdivision developers typically, when they're finished, they're held to a certain responsibility, and our land division regulations provide for the necessary improvements to serve that subdivision. It's the one and done.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Chairman.
Supervisor Martin, you have?
Yeah, I, I just want to add, I've been up there. I've been, I've been on that road, and I wouldn't want to take a UTV on that thing. So, and I understand Supervisor Gould's comments. I think I know where he's going with it. But this is significant up there for a lot of my constituents that live up there. And it does connect, it is a collector, and I think it's a viable project, and it's something that we should look at.
Director Lotosky, has there ever been talk about an improvement district? Funding this to, to, to bring it up to a better condition, or something like that? And then adopting it into a, at a certain standard, you know what I mean?
Absolutely. Chairman Lingandfelter, members of the board, of recent, under this particular petition, that was not necessarily discussed, but with my longevity and in discussing a lot of road matters with the great people in La-Zy-YU, I know that has brought up, been brought up in the past, and is a viable mechanism. I will say, of recent, we have brought up, if this were to succeed or be considered, I have mentioned in the past that other neighborhoods have made proposals for a public-private partnership.
You said it was going to cost, what, $200,000?
That's our estimate, and that would be based on a strictly in-house performance of the work, where our crews at Public Works would provide for the, the actual hard surfacing and soil stabilization. It's a level of cost that, that is still below the state threshold for public works, work.
So, there's a hundred and six addresses on this. Under an improvement district, how many years can you spread out the cost?
Ten years.
Ten?
Ten years.
So, yeah, a $200,000 project split by a hundred and six people or families, that's about $1,800, almost $1,900, divided by how many years, ten?
Ten years, yes.
So they owe you $188 a year. They get it what they want.
Chairman, I may have to assert that the improvement district approach would necessitate engineering,
Engineering, which would increase the cost substantially.
And do the work through a private contractor, so the estimate with it.
That's a fair point. Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Lotosky, recently we passed our capital improvement project where we prioritize roadwork. How much money did we prioritize? What was the total value of that project? The entire capital improvement project, which is the, well, you've determined that, and the board has determined, those are the transportation needs in the county.
We are well into the tens of millions on that cap. If you look at the entire five-year plan, and it's basically punctuated by the Vander Slice Road and Mountain View Road, as well as, I think they call it Flying Fortress Parkway now. Those are the three prominent projects that are the reason why the capital improvement program is unconstrained. But collectively, those projects probably take us definitely over $100 million.
So that's, and we don't have $100 million?
Chairman, Supervisor Gould, no, we do not, in our reserve.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Director Lotosky, are you, are you recommending that, that the board approve this? Is that what you're saying?
Chairman Lingandfelter, I am recommending staff that the board consider denying the petitions for East Bandit Drive and East Chuck Wagon Drive, and for the 1.2 miles of East Tomahawk Drive, do consider the resolution that we have prepared for the .58 miles. What this does is it would, if the board were to consider and approve this, it would just merely establish it as a county highway, provide a future opportunity for the county to contribute some level of funding, whether it's a hundred percent, a much lesser percent, as per state statute for any asphalt, concrete, or related type improvement. Right now, we can maintain it. We do maintain it as a regularly maintained, unsurface road.
I understand what you're doing. So with the designation, it opens up additional possibilities.
Opens up additional possibilities to program a future project next year, five years, ten years from now, as the board determines.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Motion second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
Ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you. I was wrong, we have a-
It was approving the whole project, then?
That was approving the .58 acres, only giving it a designation.
Or go back and redo it.
Well, the, the motion to approve was to, as I read it, approve, approve the denial. I love that.
There's two parts to this.
Yes.
Part of it was a denial of certain stretches of roadways, and then B was the actual approval or the designation of county highway to .58 acres of one road.
Yes.
And that, that designation only gives them additional possibilities for future funding.
The way, uh, the way I'm reading it, yes, is with the deny part A and approve part B, and the all-encompassing-
And I just asked in testimony if that was Lotosky's intent, and he said yes.
So I think, based on the motion, I think we're, we're good if the intent was just for that second part.
And, well, it could be for all of it. And I, you know, I mean, whatever you, whatever's, if you think it's good, and it's good, then it's good.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Davis.
Five acres.
The way that this was written-
Not acres, miles.
Point, point, go ahead.
Because that's what Travis said was acres too, and it's miles.
The rate that this is written in the agenda item is what you said motion to approve on. Am I not mistaken?
That's correction.
So if you read what it says, it's only, it's only designating that .58 acre, or miles, .58 miles of East Tomahawk Drive from the end of pavement to East Bandit Drive, a distance of .58 miles, and designating that as a county highway. That's all this did. And then your motion, because you said that you're going to, you're approving what is there, it also reads deny public petition requesting the other road.
Okay, that's fine.
So we're good.
We're good.
We don't, yeah, we can move on to the next public hearing. We're going to open up the public hearing, item number fifty, discussion and possible action. Approve the adoption of Mojave County Ordinance Number 2025-02, an ordinance regulating the residency of certain registered sex offenders. We have nobody signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item number fifty during the public hearing?
Motion to approve.
Uh, well, I need to close the public hearing first, excuse me.
Good point.
Um, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then I'm opening up to the board. Supervisor Gould?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
A second, any additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Davis, thank you.
Just one quick qualifier, just for the public and the board's awareness. Until, unless and until the cities ratify this by themselves individually, this only applies to the unincorporated, unincorporated areas of the county.
That's an important point, and we thank you for that. I think this is the right thing to do. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Hopefully, they will adopt it. Leads us to our regular agenda. Item number fifty-one, discussion of possible action, approval of the adoption of the proposed permit review timeline policy, which establishes a comprehensive framework of deadlines for key stages of the permit review process, ensuring greater accountability and transparency for all applicants, otherwise known as the shot clock policy. Director Holtry.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity. As you recall, a few board of supervisor meetings ago, we had an item that was brought to the board to propose a shot clock for the county permitting all of the permits that go through the Mojave County Development Services. With that, we did quite a bit of research and looked into what we currently do. And I do have a presentation that will be fairly brief. State statute does require that we set timeframes. This was established in 2012. So we do have an overall timeframe that is required by state statute for all licenses, or ordinances that create a license. And that timeframe must have an administrative completeness review timeframe, as well as a substantive review timeframe. With that, it does exclude, specifically in that state statute, that it's, doesn't relate to residential development, construction of residential development. Back in 2012, when this ordinance, or when the statute was adopted, Mojave County at that time, go ahead, they went ahead and implemented timeframes for all of the permitting process, including residential applications. So to kind of get into what our current policy is, we do have a policy that was adopted in, in 2012 that established, established timeframes for the administrative completeness review, as well of the, as well as the substantive review timeframe. Building permits, we require ten business days to make sure that it's administratively complete, and twenty business days for the substantive review, a total of thirty business days. And we do, in the policy, current policy that we have, we do allow for extensions. Part of the state statute also required us to post these timeframes online. We do have it on our, it has been on our website. Building permits for commercial, we have ten business days, and then the substantive review would be thirty-five business days, a total of forty-five for the total review. Septic permits are a little bit different. Those currently are, it's a delegation from the state. So the state has requirements as, for how long we have for administrative and substantive reviews. Currently, with the state requirements, it's a forty-two day for administrative business day for administrative reviews, and then a thirty-one business day for substantive reviews. That's just on a single permit. If there, if you're doing a combination on septic systems, then it does increase according to the state. Site plan reviews, we put in policy that we have a fifteen business day review timeframe for administrative completeness review, and then fifteen business days for the substantive review, not to exceed a hundred and eighty business days. Zoning permits, ten business days, and then twenty business days, not to exceed the thirty business days with extensions. To kind of go through what we're currently doing, we are meeting those current timeframes. Building permits for residential and commercial, we're able to get those through the administrative completeness review within about five business days, on average, when ten is required. Substantive review, we're doing about five to ten business days for the residential permits, and about ten business days for the commercial permits. Twenty is required for residential, and thirty-five for commercial. Septic permits, again, like those are mandated by the state, but we still are, we're able to administratively complete the review for, within fifteen business days, when forty-two is required. And we have a substantive review process for about ten days, when seventy-three is required. Site plan, essentially, anytime we get a site plan in, it usually only takes about a day to determine whether it's administratively complete, so we're getting those done pretty quickly. And then the substantive reviews are about ten business days on site plan. Zoning permits, five business days, substantive review is about five to ten. I included our average permit timeframes. I highlighted new construction. Last year's permits we had, this is single-family residential, new construction. We had a hundred and nine, or eight hundred and nine permits for single-family residential homes. As you can see, average business days, we spent about twenty-two business days to the date of accepting that application, to the date of issuance. When we do have corrections, so about thirty-eight percent of those, we are, they need corrections. When we do require corrections, the average business days to issuance is about forty-seven. Twenty-four of those days are us waiting for the applicant to get back to us. I also highlighted the conventional septic permits. We had seven hundred and fifty-nine. Fourteen business days is what our average timeframe for application to issuance. Thirty-one when we have corrections, and then we're waiting about eleven business days when the applicant has, or we're waiting for the applicant to respond. It was brought up in the, in the last board meeting about Senate Bill 1162. This is a bill that was presented for cities. I believe counties were also included at the initial portion of this bill. Counties were later removed, so this does only apply to cities. Within the bill, it requires that the administrative completeness review is done within thirty days. They don't specify business days, so we're assuming that it is calendar days. If it's not administratively complete, the resubmital application must be administratively complete within fifteen days. And then the county or jurisdiction must approve or deny the application within a hundred and eighty days. Kind of get into what we're proposing. So I have here our proposed policy, and then on the right is what our current policy is. Well, with that, we're proposing, we looked at our, just looking at our numbers, looking at what our average timeframes are, we do feel that there's room for improvement, or areas that we can make some adjustments and make it a little bit better. So for the proposed policy on residential permits, the administrative completeness review is still ten days, but the substantive review would be ten, ten days per review. So each time that somebody submits an application, we would have those, that ten days to review it. And then if there's corrections that are required, that stops the clock. And when they resubmit, we would have another ten business days. And we did put in there not to exceed the sixty business days. Commercial, and so our current policy right now is ten and twenty. This would be ten and ten. For commercial permits, it's, we're proposing ten business days and fifteen substantive review business days. The current policy is ten and thirty-five. Septic permits, again, our current policy is mandated by state, but I believe we can do, we can have an internal policy that does better than what the state's requiring. So we're proposing ten business days and fifteen business days for substantive review. Site plan, again, ten business days for the administrative completeness, and then fifteen business days for the substantive review, not to exceed the sixty days. Zoning permits, ten business days, and then another ten business days for substantive review. Previously, it was ten and twenty. We do, in the, in the policy, the proposed policy, we do allow for an extension with written currents with the applicant. So if they want to continue to extend their permit, then pass that sixty days, then they would be able to do so. Otherwise, if we start to get to that sixty days, essentially, Development Services would just have to deny it, and they would have to start over, because maybe they didn't correct all the things that they're supposed to correct. On the county side, if we fail to issue notice of granting or denying a permit within the overall timeframe, the county shall refund all fees and excuse payment of any fees that have not yet been paid. This is, and, and continue to process the application. This is set in that state statute that I showed at the beginning. That's the penalty if we don't meet those timeframes. We did look at other jurisdictions. We met with all of the other counties within Arizona. None of them had a- None of them had a policy written in place. For their essentially a shot clock or timeframes. They did have internal goals that they wanted to achieve. But nobody had a written policy, city of Kingman did have a policy in place. And they just recently updated it. Their current policy is five business days for residential. Multi-family residential and commercial applications for the administratively complete. Review. And 10 business days for residential, 25 business days. For multi-family and 20 business days for substantive reviews. This is our last slide. I just wanted to highlight. The permit volume that we receive. I would like to. Show my appreciation for my permitting staff, my review staff. They handle a very large amount of permits. Over 3,000 a year usually. I took some numbers from a like jurisdiction. Yavapai County is pretty similar to Mojave County. And just on their single family residential permits, they did 487. Single family residential permits last year. Their time from application received to the first review was about 15 business days, again, they don't have. Metrics for exactly how quickly their. Need to have the reviews done. And then just looking at Mojave County, we did 809 new single family residential permits. And it's about 10 business days before we're getting to that first review on them. City of Kingman, we're compared to the city of Kingman quite often. There, they did about 234. Single family residential permits. Last year. With that, I do believe. These metrics are. Doable, the proposed metrics that we've presented. The new software program that we have. Does track the time that the county is reviewing it as well as, excuse me, as well as the time that. The applicant has the application and it's in their court, so. We're very pleased with the new software that we have that can track exactly those timeframes. With that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you for your presentation, Director Holtry, I'd open it up to the board for some discussion. I'll start then. I've got just a few questions here, I did read the policy, I appreciate it, I think that's a step in the right direction. Just to confirm that this new policy proposed does include subdivision applications and processing.
That is a great question, Supervisor Lingefelter, it does not, it is the subdivision applications and timeframes. Are presented in our land division regulations, so it's separate from, they're already established in those land division regulations. And they, I believe a lot of them are set by statute. I do have Matthew Gunderson on the line, if he's. Available, he knows that a little bit more in depth, but we do have timeframes already set in the land division regulations for subdivisions and how long. The county can. Review the, those, those applications.
Do you remember off the top of your head?
I know we do require, I think it's 30. 30 days. I might have to call on Matthew Gunderson, he's here.
Is Mr. Gunderson on, panel clerk?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Gunderson, can you tell us what the current established? Timeframes are for subdivision approval?
Yeah, so right now, the review time is 32 business days for each review. And then it's a five business day administratively complete. Review timeline, there's not a total timeline established in that subdivision process, it's just that 32 business days per review. We do try to get those reviews done well before that 32 business day mark, but that is what is written in the land division regulations.
Director Holtry, do you think it'd be inappropriate to to try to include some sort of published standard? And as far as subdivision applications and processing in this, or? Should we keep it separate or is there an opportunity to? Include something in this?
And in this one, if the board would. Like to change anything with those subdivision ones, the subdivision timeframes. That would go through that land division regulations ordinance. And so we would probably do that separate, if you would, if you would like to do that, we can do that.
Okay. Second question, this does not include. Unless I'm mistaken, public works permits like right of way permits or parcel plats, things like that?
Chairman Lingefelter, you're correct, this only includes the permits that are listed, so. Residential, commercial, site plan, septic and zoning.
I guess my, my question on that would be, is there an opportunity to include? Right of way permits and parcel plats set, set review timelines for those types of things?
Mr. Chair, as far as the parcel plat is concerned, that is in the land division regulation and is. Regulated by our division. So that we can include that when we look at the subdivision timeframes, if you'd like. The parcel plat as well as the subdivision, as far as right of way use permits, I think that's something separate within. Public works, I'd have to rely on Director Lutowski.
Appreciate it, it sounds like I have some more homework to do. Administrative reviews are all identified as 10 business days, two weeks. I guess I'd ask, is that always necessary, some simple like septic or. Building permits for awnings, zoning permits. Typically, those are completed very quickly and I know that the city of Kingman has administrative review on those of five days. Do you think we could maybe? Match that to five business days?
Mr. Chair. We're currently meeting about that five, five business day. Average. I did, we did put in the 10 days just to give us a little buffer zone. Sometimes what happens is we have a developer that has 20, 30. Single family residential permits and they bring them in all at one time. And that really, that's where it kind of gets bogged down, that's where our averages kind of go up a little bit. So to kind of build in, instead of having to say deny, 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 because we can't get it done in in those 10 business days. Or five business days. We left that 10 day buffer. For those times, the other, the other thing is solar permits. Those ones come in all in one big bunch as well, some of the solar companies, they save them up. They'll bring 20 to 30 of those in at one time. If we didn't have that. Then yes, we would be able to meet that five business day pretty easy all the time. But we did leave it in there for that buffer.
You're saying that in most of, most of the instances, you're, you're turning it around like five.
Right.
Okay. So if an application is deemed deemed to be administratively complete, when does the substantive? Review clock begin, is it immediately or is it after the administrative review period has ended at two weeks?
It'd be immediately, so if the, if we get it done within that five business days or sooner, right, one business day sometimes. Then that substantive review timeframe would then start, because what we do in our program. Is we'll assign it to the divisions to for review. And that's what starts that, that substantive review block. And essentially it goes into the queue. We got several permits and so once. It's able to make it through that queue, then. We need to make sure we at least get to it within that, that timeframe that's established.
Great, thank you, my next question would be, I do like the 60 day total review time. What I have a little bit concerned with is the fact that the policy statement. Under administrative reviews states that if a policy notes deficiencies, it is denied. Could we rather say that the permit information? Is returned to the applicant along with a check and noted deficiencies or something like that, I have a little bit concern.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Definitely, we can probably adjust that language. Essentially what we're doing is we're not, in that administrative completeness review. We would not accept something if they don't have everything that they're supposed to bring to us. But then if at that time they do bring everything that they're, we're supposed to receive. Essentially what, essentially what we are doing is we're sending it back to them. And it is kind of denied where they didn't meet some of those, they didn't meet the application requirements. And they're starting, they're just going to have to resubmit the application. But we can, we can look at the language and see if there's some better language to present that.
On the online system that we're going to. They don't get a little green checkmark. If they don't submit everything that they're required to be accurate.
Correct.
Sort of to that point, I know that. Site plan reviews right now state that the application materials are submitted either online or in person, currently site plans require one hard. Copy of the material plus one online version of the information. Does that stay as it is, the dual submittal? requirement for those and other permits?
It shouldn't, we should have just the ability to submit electronically.
Just electronically? Okay.
We can take a look at that.
Yeah. Policy says that they will automatically issue a refund if the permit goes beyond 60 days or approved extension. And the county has not issued an approval denial. Is there a way to discuss instances where the permit cannot be issued due to? Like outside agency approvals? In both building permits for manufactured housing or waiting, you know, on HUD approvals. ADEQ approvals, Unisource approvals. That type of thing, I mean, I don't think that should account against the applicant.
Correct. Let me see if I understand your, your comment correctly. I also don't believe it should count against the county. So one thing that we did provide in this. The policy is that if we're waiting for an outside agency like.
Say Unisource Electric or Gas?
Yeah, so the essentially it's on the waiting period for the applicant. And that shot clock has stopped, so the only time that the shot clock is going. Is when the county is reviewing it and they have resubmitted. Complete application.
Okay, that sounds fair.
Yeah.
Great, that's all the questions I have, I'd open it back up to the board for additional questions. Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion. For that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Additional discussion, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Director Holtry, thank you and your staff, you're doing a good job and appreciate this policy, it's a step in the right direction.
Thank you, and just to clarify. With that approval. Did we want to make those minor changes in language that you were, we were discussing?
That wasn't included, that wasn't included in the, in the motion, is that something that we could? Maybe bring back next time, just so we don't have to revisit this or? Unless you want to include that supervisor really in an updated motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to revise.
Yeah. We have a motion for reconsideration?
Yes, motion reconsider.
Yeah, I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, you want to submit a new motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve. The agenda item with changes. Discuss.
Thank you Supervisor, thank you Supervisor, we do have a motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, as appear to have it, do have it sorted, thank you again very much. We've done item 52, we have. One item that we talked about in executive session, item number 53, we do have a few people that have signed up for item number 53, so let's go with them first, they've been waiting a long time. Diana. Francis? Thank you. Carol Young, you're on deck.
Thank you, Chairman and Supervisors. I'm against this increase, it's ridiculous. In 1967. When I bought my property in Golden Shores. It was supposed to be a retirement committee, a community. As my parents were told as well when they bought in 63. Then we got a school. We don't have qualified teachers, qualified superintendent. And we suffered a fraud with Judy Selberg. And then with Kim, the over $2 million. Excuse me. Then the superintendent. Signed off on everything, as does that board. And the community was swindled up their tax dollars over $2 million. It just seems wrong to me. Now the insurance paid them back the money, what'd they do with that money? There is no oversight, that same two people on the board still signing off on everything. And there's no oversight, this just needs to stop. It needs to stop and it's not viable, they don't even have enough kids to make it worthwhile. They had 64 on the day of that board meeting. By Wednesday, they had 54. I don't know what it is by now, but they have to produce the numbers. By August the 21st, so we don't know because they don't tell you and they're not transparent and. Please, just save this community, we don't need that school, just please. I appreciate your time.
I'll call Joy Bancroft.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. I'm Joy Bancroft from Topak. First, I want to thank you for your support two weeks ago. Unfortunately, your decision not to acknowledge the Topak School tax seemed like a good step, but the school administration and Topak School Board. Have not been convinced to go back and provide public hearing. The answer I received from the school board member is that the position that there was no reason that they had to have another meeting. They realize they may have not conducted the meeting according to open meeting law, however, with the advice of their attorney, it was not needed. The tax increase approved from the school board should be null and void. Per ARS 38431.05. Due to the violation of open meeting law. It could have been ratified and reopened. I've spoken to two of the three board members to inform them they have the authority to make that decision. I spoke to John Warren, he said the Board of Supervisors had no authority. And his involvement is not within the scope of his position. Some community residents have received responses from the Attorney General and the Attorney General is informed that they have referred it to investigators. One individual got an online petition, petition. This is just so much, in my opinion, of a debacle. But I feel like I have to say a lot of these things, I understand you had executive session over this. And I realize the Board of Supervisors. To not acknowledge the tax would leave the board with unforeseen liability and I truly understand that. And a recommendation is. Not to, I mean, your recommendation is to acknowledge this, but for the record, I can tell you the fight's not going to end here. However, the board decides to move forward today. I appreciate the hard work from the county attorney. I appreciate the candid conversation I had with County Attorney Ryan Esplin. And many residents in this community find this absurd, the way the school conducted this. Absurd how wrongly they put this tax through for 45 to 50 students and the staff of 2022. I regret to say Topak School has had its hiccups for the last five years. And the attendance has been dropping for the last three years for various reasons. These students deserve a school that operates efficiently in so many ways. Consolidation with Mojave Valley would be a good avenue to pursue and would provide a better education and resources, but likely the school board would not approve. Recalling the school board is an option. I'm sad to say this whole debacle of this tax increase has affected the school's reputation, the student attendance and the residents' trust. Thank you for listening.
Cole Young?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Cole Young, I am the superintendent from Mojave Valley Elementary School District. I just, I've, I've come to act as a resource for you when it's come to the two weeks ago being pulled from the agenda. I speak for my board when it comes to please separate both processes when you look at both districts. We have been working with legal counsel ever since we started talking about the adjacent ways we have followed policy and practice. We took pulling from the agenda, being pulled from the agenda very seriously. Our, our lawyer actually reached out to multiple lawyers to contact. County Attorney Deputy Davis as well as Mr. Esplin, we've hoped to have solved. Many of the questions when it came to the truth and taxation piece as well as transparency. I'm here to act as a resource if you have any questions, but we ask that you support the movement moving forward to the treasurer to levy the adjacent ways. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, that's the last person we had to speak. I'd open it up to the board for discussion or action. Supervisor Martin?
I think I defer this to Mr. Davis to let everybody know.
Sure.
What's going on.
Mr. Davis, can you? Give us a quick summary of what this separately elected board did and what our role is in this whole process? board did and what our role is in this whole process?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. I'd first, uh, bring the board's attention to the language in item fifty-three, which is to acknowledge, not approve, not accept, acknowledge. I would, I would have it as the equivalent of a head nod, uh, in, in legal terms. Um, the two school districts are independently elected by the constituents and are held accountable by the voters in the same way that this board is or any other elected school district. Um, as far as what, uh, the oversight of the board is, I would say is extremely limited. And we approved the school, we approved the tax levies not just for these school districts, but for cities as well and, uh, and any conduct of the meeting notwithstanding, um, we did go over the, the truth and taxation, uh, notices with the two school districts and, and we think that as far as that is concerned, that they did what they needed to do. There was some confusion with Mojave Valley, but we got that sorted out with their legal counsel. Um, there is a, a way, there is a, a process in place to correct if any school, if any district or city or county oversteps its taxing authority. There's the Property Tax Oversight Commission established by the legislature and put under the Department of Revenue and their job is to look by the end of next month and if any, uh, polity in the state oversteps its authority, they issue a correction and that correction goes into effect the next, uh, taxing year and so everything gets equaled out. Um, there, so there is, there is a, a remedy. If, if any of these school districts or any of the other districts not pulled did violate the law in any way, that would, would be of concern to the Property Tax Oversight Commission. They have the power and have acted in the past in other counties to rectify that issue. I hope that answers that question.
Thank you, I believe it does. I'd open it up to the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The legislature doesn't stick the Board of Supervisors in the middle of things unless they want them to have some kind of a say over it. There's no, absolutely no reason to have us nod our head. If that was all it was, it was a head nod, then it, we would just send it to the clerk and then it would go to the treasurer. But what we're telling by our acceptance of this is whether or not we're going to have the treasurer collect those tax revenues. That's the real question here. Um, it, it's the head nod, this has always struck me as odd, I've had various different explanations of it, but what it boils down to is for some reason, the legislature chose to put the Board of Supervisors into the process. So we should use, we should use that, uh, hammer that we have. If you looked at both of the truth and taxation notices, you would have no way of knowing whether that was a tax increase. Nowhere, it says adjacent ways. It doesn't say we're taxing your property, it says adjacent ways. Whether that's the short-sightedness of the legislature when they created this or, or whether that's just how it evolved, I don't know. But the, the purpose of the notice is to tell the public, we're going to raise your taxes above the two percent limit and we're required to have a hearing, required to have, uh, take an individual roll call vote on that. You would not know that that was what was going to happen from what the notices that we saw or their own agendas. There was no separation in the agenda. There, so where you're, you caught, it's noticed in the paper that it's going to happen at six o'clock, but there, it's not going on at six o'clock. Um, I think we should use our, use our hammer to make people follow the actual rules. Hopefully, the, the tax, the tax committee will take a look at this and the legislature will take a look at this and if they need to firm up this law, um, because I, it's not informing the public. They have no idea what's going on, that's why you get six people turning out for these meetings, because they're, they're uninformed. Luckily, the legislature began to, a few years back, to have the treasurer send out tax notices to people that have a mortgage, so they would actually know where their property taxes were going. And that was a, that was a great idea that the legislature had to do that, because people should know where their taxes are going. For some reason, they think the Board of Supervisor tax is in control of all these taxes and in reality, we're in control of about ten percent of them. But they all go through us because as a courtesy to the taxpayer, we collect those taxes and actually the treasurer does it, we asked the treasurer to do it. Otherwise, those, those property owners would get twelve tax bills from twelve different taxing authorities. But that's really what we're doing is we're accepting those to have the treasurer collect them. If they don't want to do it the way that it should be done, they can collect their own taxes. Thank you.
Are there supervisor comments or I would entertain a motion?
Chairman Leon Filter.
Mr. Mornian.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould, I just wanted to, uh, maybe offer a response to, to some of your comments. Um, the TNT hearings and the, and the language in those notices, I have to deal with that a lot in my capacity as the chief financial officer. Um, and, and it may be a short sight of, of the legislature because the way that the, the statute is written for TNT notices, uh, it doesn't give any leeway. It's basically you have to use the language verbatim, there's no, uh, adding additional language or taking away the existing language and so that may be why there's no explanation of, you know, it just says adjacent ways. When we look at the TNT notice that was published by each of these districts, it does appear to comply with statute. Um, as, as far as why the legislature, uh, puts the board in the middle in this situation, uh, I believe you touched on it, is, is because for efficiency, because the treasurer has to have the tax rates for each district, all of the districts, uh, passed to them by the board and so that's, that's how the law is written. Um, I just wanted to offer a little bit more explanation as, as far as PTOC's role in all of this. Uh, Attorney Davis touched on that. The Property Tax Oversight Commission does review all of the rates set by all of the taxing districts and if they find that there is anything there where a, a district has exceeded their, their levy capacity or done something else that would cause, uh, a need for action, PTOC does step in, uh, they have done so in the past with their counties and, and the way, what that actually looks like in actuality is if you have a district that has a levy capacity of two hundred thousand dollars and they levy three hundred thousand dollars, PTOC basically steps in and says, hey, you've exceeded your levy capacity, they notify the county treasurer in that county where that district, that tax district resides, they say, hold back the hundred thousand dollars by which they have exceeded their levy capacity for the year. And then the next year, that district has to lower their, their levy rate commensurately, uh, in order for that, the total taxes they're levered over a period of two years to not exceed the levy capacity for that district. And so I, I, I don't know if, if all the members of the public, uh, understand that it, it is, but that's, that's how the law is written right now and the authority is given to PTOC, not to the Board of Supervisors to, to step in to take a corrective action with those independent taxing districts. But I just thought I would offer that, uh, for some additional context.
All right. Additional discussion and already entertain a motion. Supervisor Martin.
Make a motion that we acknowledge the tax situation as presented.
Okay, we have that, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Uh, we have a second additional discussion. Supervisor Burley.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and Supervisor Gould is right, I mean, uh, we just seem to be like the rubber stamp, but I don't think the legislature actually intended us to be that rubber stamp. We have to authorize the treasurer to do her job, um, or their job. Unfortunately, the remedy is further down the road on getting a hold of getting on those school boards and being able to fix that. You know, you got to get the train off the track sometimes and, and, and take a truck. Sometimes it's better to get on that truck and, and drive, drive through it. Getting on those school boards is where the local control is supposed to be. Unfortunately, a lot of people kind of just sit there and we're on autopilot and get complacent and hopefully that people do have the right thing until something happens where everybody gets the attention. This is the time when people need to step up and gain control of their school boards on, in, in finding remedy. Uh, the Auditor General, unfortunately, the Auditor General's report came out on one of those school boards or school districts too late for the last election and it might have been a, a little bit more, um, informative to the voters on how they wanted to be able to control their local, uh, school boards. I just wanted to make that point.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, yes, Supervisor Letman, thank you.
I have a question for Attorney Davis, what are the legal consequences of not acknowledging?
The legal consequences is that their school boards, we would become liable to the school boards, the school boards would likely sue us under what's called a writ of mandamus, which is basically to force the government to do its nondiscretionary duty. And we would litigate that and if the county were not to prevail, we would be required to do this anyway, either by court order or it just happening by court order, it wouldn't even come back to the board, depending on how that order is written, and then we'd be liable for any attorney's fees. And the school districts, similar to ACIP, they're all private law firms that contract with school districts, um, they would have, we have paid their, their legal fees on top of our costs and expenses.
Thank you. Supervisor Burley, do you have a comment?
Uh, no, well, other than the fact that there is a, um, follow-through with this, with the PTOC, so, and that's with the Department of Revenue, so there's, there is some remedy, some balance down the road, possibly.
Attorney Davis, what, what's the Board of Supervisors' responsibility when it comes to school districts? I mean, we, these have, these are separately elected taxing districts.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman, they are separately elected, they're accountable to, they have a voter constituents and they're, they're accountable to those voters and those voters make the decision to keep them in or, or take them out. There, there's, uh, if, uh, I would just note on top of everything that when it comes to a tax increase, when it comes to the Property Tax Oversight Commission, there's a tax increase and then there's an illegal tax increase. And so the, uh, Property Tax Oversight Commission will only step in if it's an illegal tax increase, not just a tax increase.
That's right, that was my understanding. Okay, well, we have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
As appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Uh, we'll move to call to the public. Uh, Diana Francis.
Thank you. Uh, Chairman, Supervisors, I appreciate you allowing me to speak. So what I'm speaking about now is in general, Golden Valley, Golden Shores, Chloride, those places are very rural. The people that have moved there have moved there a long time ago predominantly because they wanted to be there in the middle of nowhere. Then you've got these other people coming in, want to change everything and it's so unfair. So I just ask that as a rule, Board of Supervisors, don't try to enlarge our rural areas, we don't want sidewalks, we don't want lights, we just want to live out in the middle of nowhere because that's where we went there. But when you've got these other people coming in, they want the big city, then go to Bullhead, go to Kingman, go to Lake Havasu, that's wonderful for them, but for us people to like to be out in the sticks, let us be there. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Kenny Works. Kenny Works. Move on to, uh, Mr. Jerry Johnson. Sean Reagan, you're on deck.
Hi, my name is Jerry Johnson. Uh, I live on Chuar Drive in Golden Valley, in the Golden Valley Rancho's area. Two weeks ago was my first board meeting and I already felt like I had to get up and talk. Uh, I have a private well, number nine-two-zero-four-three-zero, registered with the Department of Water Resources Well Registry. My well is just a little over three hundred feet deep. I have two maps I want to share. This, this is from NASA and the Arizona State University where our water was in two thousand and two. This is where we're at now. There's so little water left. Now, these, these areas are from Wyoming, Colorado, New Mexico, Nevada, California, and of course, just about the whole state of Arizona. There's not enough water available for developments to happen in Golden Valley. We have lost twenty-seven-point-eight million acre-feet of groundwater that supplies about forty million families. This amount is equal to the storage capacity of Lake Mead. My question to the board is, when my well dries up due to these new subdivisions proposed for Golden Valley, who's going to pay for my well to be dug deeper? This map is from the, uh, Wells Registry, uh, state of Arizona. I took a central pet point of the well, right off of Highway sixty-eight, the well number Ten-mile radius, there are five-hundred-and-seventy-nine wells in a twenty-mile stretch across Golden When the new subdivisions come to the valley, we can't afford the water drained from our aquifer. I'm retired from California, five years ago. Who is going to pay to re-drill my well if these homes are not, if these homes are allowed to be built? All I can see is a class-action problem for the county, which they can't afford.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Well, Sean Reagan, um, Ken. Reason I'm coming here today, I wasn't prepared to. Got information that there are some individuals at every level, both city, bullet city, I've even heard from county level, but I can't confirm any of it because they refuse to give me the information. But my organization has come under
Can you speak into the microphone just a little bit more? Thank you, sir.
My organization has come under attack. I have come under attack and all I try to do is take care of dogs, vets in the community and try to prevent their suicides and try to keep from dogs from being euthanized. It's deplorable that somebody would attack us and have attacked us and has caused our resources to plummet to almost zero and I had to personally take care of it. I think it's absolutely deplorable when you take that away from a veteran or a helpless animal, that the community calls me up thirty-eight times, forty times a day to take a dog. I don't have the room, I don't have the resources. And when I ask my government for help, I hear no. I hear no. Yet I do also hear that they funded other organizations. So apparently, it's either me or it's just simply they don't give a damn about the veterans because that's ultimately what it's about. We're putting a dog in the hands of a veteran and in this last week, I had five phone calls. Two wives of veterans killed themselves among the other veterans that have done so and left behind five children. I stand in their, I, I stand point for them because this can't keep happening. And if my organization isn't good enough for the community, well, then I'll have to make some choices, right? But I, I, I just think there ought to be some damn-ass shame that nobody wants to support this. I have lost most of my resources because people have went on Facebook and told people we are closed, so people don't think we're even open. And then I go and I ask members of the community, supervisors, or, I don't know, council, and they just stare at me and give me that stupid blank stare and nothing, not a phone call, not an email, not nothing. You don't care? Just say so. I'm not here to make friends. I will call out the bullshit when it comes out, that's for sure. And maybe I'm not liked for that, but I don't care because I'm not here for any of you or anything else besides those dogs and those vets. Those are the, in that order. Dogs are more important than people because, let me tell you what, they're more gracious and they, at least they have a little bit of respect for other, other people and they do take care of those vets. And I'm tired of getting these phone calls of my friends, friends of other friends, now their spouses, and they're leaving children behind. So if the work isn't important to this community, say so by your silence, thank you.
Jennifer Estesito.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito-Kingman. Well, if we're not going to hold Mr. Patillo and the other members of the General Plan Subcommittee responsible, who are we going to hold responsible? Because I realize, like I said before, some of you weren't here when this process was initiated. But when the process was initiated, the county manager had an obligation to follow the law, ARS 11-805. Now, in that law, it says that the county had to have a procedure manual that outlined the procedure for creating a new general plan. But I can't seem to find that document. It's required. Why wasn't it provided to the General Plan Subcommittee? Why wasn't it provided to that board? I don't know. Who dropped the ball? But moreover, the excuse of, oh, it's an IT glitch. That's why some agendas and some meetings weren't posted. Let me tell you something. Every agenda that was posted failed to have the proper signature of when it was posted in the upper right-hand corner. That has nothing to do with an IT glitch. So, the Planning and Zoning Board has legal counsel. The excuse of, well, gee, we never took a vote, so there's nothing to redo other than the presentation and more public input. How do we know? How do the five of you know unless you've read the procedure manual? It's a very serious question. Was the law ever followed the first time? If it wasn't followed the first time, then how can it be followed by just remanding it back to Planning and Zoning again for them to make their own recommendation to themselves? Now, another interesting thing about that statute is is because you rebuked the plan as presented, you now have to pass it unanimously. Because if you didn't read 11-805, you didn't know that, did you? It says that it has to be a supermajority, and on a board of five, that's unanimous. So, now, because it has to come back to you, yes, you're right, there's no hard deadline. You have to reconsider it within a year, and you have to keep reconsidering it till you come to a conclusion. But why was nobody following the law? Did the county manager fail? Did legal counsel fail? How do we even have a draft general plan if the subcommittee never took a vote to do anything? Then does that put Mr. Holtry on the line for just him and his staff inventing all this out of whole cloth in secret meetings with Engel Homes? I don't know. But the law is the law because it's supposed to be followed, right? We hear all the time, if you don't like the law, change the law. But my question to you is, why haven't you read the procedure manual? And why aren't you making sure that it was followed the first time that it's being followed now? Thank you.
That was the last person we had. Thank you, board. We are adjourned.